Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for July 18th of 2023. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Great to see everybody. We've got a very special occasion here to honor some great baseball players who did something great. We'll talk about that in just a few moments. Let's get right into recognition. We've got introduction and swearing in of new police officers, and we will have, actually, I'll have the chief introduce our officers and have them come on up. So come on up, chief, and you can do the acknowledgement, and then we'll do the swearing in. And before we get started, officers, the cake is for you guys, too. We're all going to split the cake as a community.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you and our residents the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Mayor Farrell will give the oath of office this evening. Each officer standing before you are entry-level police officer who recently graduated from the police academy and is currently in our field training program. Most of these officers took approximately a year to get to where they are today, from applying to be a police officer to graduating from the five-month police academy. These officers are at varying stages of their four-month field training program, working with an experienced corporal or a police officer. These officers are quality individuals, and they're people of integrity. We're fortunate to have them as part of our team and serving our community. First, we have Officer Adam Taylor. Prior to joining the city of Federal Way, Adam worked as a safety team member for We Care Daily Clinics, security officer for Sound Transit, and a security professional for Universal Protection Service. Adam graduated from the Place Academy on April 24th. Adam enjoys spending time with his wife and their two dogs in their free time. Adam is nearing the completion of his field training program. Next, we have Officer Joshua Jackman. Joshua earned a vocational certificate from the University, Universal Technical Institute. Before joining the city of Federal Way, Joshua worked as a quality technical coach for Caliber Collision and as a Metro Auto Rebuild South Technician. Joshua graduated from the police academy on June 15th. In Joshua's free time, he enjoys snow biking. That's something I haven't done yet. Officer Joshua Powers is next. Before joining the city of Federal Way, Joshua was a corrections corporal for the Mason County Sheriff's Department. At the police academy, Joshua was a squad leader, completed the fitness and force challenge, and received the prestigious Patrol Partner Award. Joshua graduated number two overall in his academy class. Joshua graduated from the police academy on May 31st. Joshua and his wife practiced jiu-jitsu in their spare time and are competitive powerlifters. Next, we have Officer Tiana Wu. Prior to joining the city of Federal Way, Tiana worked as a security officer for the University Village in Seattle, a real estate broker, and a hostess for Como Restaurant. Tiana graduated from the police academy on June 29th. In her spare time, Tiana enjoys dirt biking. Next, we have Officer Joshua Lee. Before joining the city of Federal Way, Joshua served in the United States Army as a section chief and in the United States Marine Corps as a platoon sergeant, team leader, squad leader, and a rifleman. Joshua served in the armed forces since 2014 and was honorably discharged earlier this year. Joshua graduated from the police academy on June 29th. In his spare time, Joshua enjoys riding his Harley. Please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Officers, if I can have you come up to the mic.
All right, officers, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Joshua.
Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
And the state of Washington?
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution?
And I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington?
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment?
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully?
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially?
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Federal Way?
In and for the city of Federal Way.
King County, Washington?
King County, Washington.
And such duties as prescribed by law?
And such duties as prescribed by law.
Congratulations. All right, it's great to see law enforcement careers being here, and we really just appreciate your ambassadors of our community. We appreciate all that you do. And, you know, having been a prosecutor for as long as I was and just been now mayor for the past 10 years and council for 10 years before that, so much of what police officers do doesn't really have, you know, whether it's chasing people or giving people tickets. It's really about community service. It's about helping people. And all the hundreds and calls and just the things that they do as they, you know, do a day's worth of work and a week's worth of their work. It's just, we really appreciate all that, and thank you for being on when we can rest in our homes and sleep at night. So thank you so much. Okay, and we're getting to, just to let you know, we're really working our way up to a record number of officers at the city of Federal Way. We have, for really a record, 150 budgeted officers, and we're working our way up to full staffing at the police department to make sure that we've got a safe community. And so you're a big part of that. Okay, and now, we've got certificates of recognition for a very special event. The Federal Way National Little League Seniors here in Federal Way won the state championship for area. Let's give them a big round of applause. Now, they're headed down to California for regionals, which means, you know, if they do well there, they can go on to, you know, nationals. And so we're really proud of you, and I know many of you and, you know, the coaching staff, and really very happy for you. So each one of those, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go up here to the podium. I'll call each and every name out of the coaches and the players. I'll have you, you know, come over here, take your certificate, and then we'll have you, one by one, sort of fill in in front of the council, and there'll be time for a picture, and then, most importantly, the cake. Can you tell them excited about the cake? Pam did a really, really good job. Cosca does a great job, but we got, you guys will see, well, if you, by the time you see it, it'd probably be all caught up, but this is beautiful mitt and glove, and she just outdid herself today. Okay, so, on behalf of the citizens of Federal Way, the mayor and city council wish to express their support and encouragement for the Federal Way National League Seniors baseball team who won the 2023 Washington State Championship and will be representing Federal Way and Washington State in the West Regional Senior Little League All-Start Tournament, signed by myself, the mayor, on today's date, 18th of July, 2023, and by all seven city council members. So we're very proud of you. We're going to get a picture. Why don't I go over there, and we'll get this started. I do want to say, before we get started, this is about fundraising and making sure that they can make the trip down there. And so what we're going to do is, hopefully, we've got a representative for the Federal Way Mirror, that we can get, connect up the Mirror and the team for the GoFundMe or whatever mechanism they have for that, and I'll let the community know that we want to support our team. With that, I'll step over here.
And while he's going to the podium, I just want to say thank you to the coaches and the parents for getting these young folks to where they are today. Good job.
All right, we'll start off with Coach Craig Geiman. Come on down, Craig.
The team actually signed a baseball for you?
Oh, thank you.
And so, all the team members.
Thanks, Coach. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we've got also a coach, Jose Favela. Coach? All right, Coach Ben Gillahan.
Can you guys, did everybody hear me okay? And I don't know, Thomas, if you could pick me up back there. Tyler Bull. Emilio Favela. Tyneus Gillahan.
Mabin Gillan. Traceen Geiman. Trendon Geiman. Eric Cavili. Tomah Holden. Angel Martinez. Hey, just imagine at the Mariners someday, Angel Martinez at the plate. Jacob Peck. Brock Paulus. Jassoni Prum. Manuel Ramirez. Orlando Young. All right, and let's give them another big round of applause. And council, should we, let's have all the players come together. David, what do you think? Should we stand up behind him or try to get in? What do you think? And Bruce, our unofficial photographer, what do you think, Bruce? All right, everybody, can we, let's have the council come down. Well, what do you think? Sounds like you guys. Oh, and then the council stays up back? Okay, I'll stop talking now.
Come on down. Come on down.
Is that too much? David, am I too high?
You want us down there?
All right, let's come down. All right, we're on our way.
Did the mirror catch that? All right, here we go. How about that? All right. Good job, everybody. All right, good.
All right, congratulations. Let's give a big round.
So you might come back here, huh?
That's our plan. That's right. Great job.
Thank you.
That was great. Congratulations again. I hope that everybody had a sizable enough piece of cake. There's still some in the back, I could see. Okay, now, we're on to Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. We've got a community center update, as promised our last meeting, by Brian Davis, our city administrator, and John Hutner, Parks Director. So with that, Brian Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council? My wingman's here. Okay. So in response to some questions that the council and the public asked regarding the follow-up to the last week's presentation on the locker room, last meeting's presentation on the locker room funding, we looked into the main question at the time was, which was the statement, or which we've now later discovered is a rumor, that there was some sort of settlement after the building was finalized with the builder. After looking at our records, we have determined that there was no such settlement, and it was likely just a rumor spread. And so whether that started with staff or the community, we don't know. But that's, we have determined that there is no record of any kind of settlement with the builder after the building was complete and handed over to the city. In addition to that, we reviewed the plans and found that all the inspections, the reviews and inspections verified that the building was constructed according to the approved plans. And so that's where we stand at this time. We believe, based on the report that was provided to us by our consultant, that the damage was due, mostly due to the lack of dehumidification in the HVAC system, which we will be looking at in the upgrade of the locker rooms and the renovation of the locker rooms, so as to prevent that from happening again. Additionally, we are proposing a, we're working on a schedule for the renovation, and we're working on the contract language and the contract timeline as we speak. We are likely going to be going through an RFQ process, a request for qualifications, before doing a bid proposal. And the intent behind that, among other things, is to make sure that we know who we're working with, to make sure that we don't run into a similar issue that we had last time, where the work is later to be discovered, discovered as substandard and very costly to correct. So it's a little bit longer timeline, however, we, the disruption of the locker rooms will be limited because we will be phasing it. There's three sets of locker rooms. There's the men's and the women's, and then there's the family cabanas. And so we'll likely start with the women's. And during that time, the women's will have access to the family cabanas. And then, once that's done, then they'll move back. And then the men will move into the family cabanas. And then the family cabanas will be last, such that the disruption will be minimized. The schedule, again, there should be no disruption to operations. So when the cabanas are done, right now, we're projecting that to be early 2025. With the other, like I said, the other ones being completed in sequence before that. And also, I wanted to mention... So here's some of the pictures that I showed last time. We've bought ourselves a little bit of time in that our contractor has recommended a temporary fix that we could do, for instance, like this right here, this left picture, and even the right one for that matter, but the left one is a little bit more drastic. But to apply some special plaster that effectively, for one, it makes it look better. But secondly, it will minimize the corrosion. It won't eliminate it, or ultimately prevent it, but it will slow it down a little bit. And so we'll do that so that the locker rooms are more presentable than they are right now. That's something that we will do every year. We close the community center down a week in August to do regular maintenance of the building. So we'll do that during that week, so that when people come back, they'll basically walk into a much better-looking locker room situation. So that's our, that's our plan. That's the response to some of the questions you had. I'm happy to, and John's here as well, if you have any questions that we can answer.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. So my question is, when you found out that there was a problem with the pool, you came to us and we talked about using the ARPA money. But at that point, did you know about the locker rooms? And why didn't, if you did, why didn't we just attack the locker rooms at the same time and work on the pool and the locker rooms at the same time, so we could minimize the disruption to the community?
Yes.
Because we're using ARPA dollars, so you had the money.
Yes, thank you for the question. So the, what we were doing at the time was minimal treatment. We did not have the full assessment that we then went out to get. And perhaps, in looking back, maybe we should have done that at the time. But just in looking at some of the corrective measures that we had applied at the time, it was buying us time, essentially. We knew that the day of reckoning would come, but we were buying some time with some of the things that we were doing, such that we didn't have to spend the money, you know, years ago. And so that's, once we did the assessment, we discovered the full extent of the problem. And so that's why we're doing it now.
Okay. Well, I wish we would have just done the pool and the locker rooms at the same time. It is what it is. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Paul.
Yeah, we had talked about the envelope inspection. Is there any status update on that one?
I'm sorry?
Inspection of the overall community center to understand if there's other issues that might be popping up in the future.
Yes, so that, we're developing a contract to do that, yes.
Okay. Was that what you mentioned earlier, or was that a different?
That's something else.
Okay. And then, the band-aid you were talking about for putting on this, is that can be also done to the hallways, where the, it's kind of slushing off at the bottom on the floor, the walls?
Are you speaking of the hallways in the locker room area?
Yes.
Yes, the entire locker room areas, including the entry, the main entry, out of the main hallway, all of the areas that you see that look anything like that, will be that treatment that Brian explained would be applied to that. So that will no longer be seen during this time.
Okay. And is that the plaster that he had mentioned, then?
It's a plaster and then the plastic, like you'd see in a shower, refinish.
Oh.
The plastic you put over that, so it'll look nice, clean, like the shower next to it. It'll look like that while we develop the full process to redo the whole locker room.
Do we have an estimated price or cost for that?
We're working that up right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilwoman Walsh.
Yeah. With the, you know, our last council meeting, there'd been questions if there was any financial recourse back to the original builder or architect. And I, you know, I've received communication, know the answer to that. But I think it's important that the, that the public knows what the response to that is as well. So if you could share that with everyone.
Okay, thank you. There is no recourse, and Brian jump in, or Ryan jump in if I get this wrong at all. There is no recourse, as Brian mentioned just momentarily ago, that the building was constructed according to plans with the materials that were spec'd way back in those days. And so we accepted the building based upon that. This damage that now has surfaced was underlying for, obviously, over time. This didn't happen overnight. It happened over the 16 years that we've been open. So there is no recourse, is my understanding at this point.
It's referred to as the statute of repose, and it is long since passed. But I know you know now, but I...
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that.
The timeframe has passed for us to seek damages. Deputy Mayor?
One more question. Have studies been done on the air in the locker rooms to make sure that there's not bad stuff floating around that people could breathe?
I don't know that, any official studies, but I don't believe there's any suspicion of any of that. Through the study that was done by the company that did our assessment on the locker rooms, there's no suspicion of anything at all like that, of anything dangerous at all.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now move on to the further report of Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. The King County Voter Center will be located here at City Hall, the Patrick Marv Room on the first floor. The dates and hours are, this is for the upcoming election, Saturday, July 29th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday, July 31st, this is for the primary. Monday, July 31st through, on 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on Election Day, Tuesday, August 1st, 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The services that will be provided, we will assist voters, or they, the King County Elections, will assist voters who need help completing ballots, new voter registration and issue voter cards, update current voter records, and provide trained staff and specialized equipment to help those with disabilities cast a private, independent ballot. Okay, and now, Mayor, the recent community events. I was recently at the King County Fair opening ceremony on July 13th. That, actually, it was out in Enham Claw. It's always great to get out there. Boy, they've done a lot with Enham Claw. Looks beautiful. And I was out there with quite a number of other mayors and elected officials on the stage there. It was the 160th anniversary of the King County Fair, which means it is the oldest fair west of the Mississippi. Just a case in point, Abraham Lincoln was in his first term as president when that started as a King County Fair. Just let that sink in. So he didn't make an appearance, but we, our county executive did, a bunch of number of other mayors, and it was a great time. And I didn't quite get the corn dog I was looking for, but lunch was provided. Ribbon Cutting for Pet Supplies Plus on July 15th, that's on the mall, or at the Commons, on the west side there. And it's right next to the Amazon store. It's really great. We had many of the members of the council were there, and I got some pet supplies. And it was a really great event. And Dick's Burgers actually provided some refreshments as well. So we're very happy about Pet Supplies Plus coming in. And they really want to be involved in the community and help out with local charities. The City Council and the School Board met for a meet and greet on July 15th at the local Starbucks on 320th. And I'm sure we'll hear that, about that, from our council members. Upcoming events, we've got Summer Sounds Concert at Steel Lake Park and July 9th and August 2nd. And those are great opportunities to hear some music and really enjoy a nice evening. The NHRA Drag and Drive Thursday, July 12th, 3:00 p.m. at the PAC. And that's, that is this Thursday at the PAC, 3:00 p.m. Many of those cars are going to be stopping by the PAC. So come on by for a few minutes, check those out. It's going to be a lot of fun. We've got the NHRA Northwest Nationals Pacific Raceways Friday through Sunday, the 13th through the 15th. And Dick's Drive-In, obviously, Thursday, July 27th. So next Thursday, Dick's Drive-In will be opening. Upcoming events, we've got the 67th Kiwanis Salmon Bay, Steel Lake Park, Friday, July 28th at 4:00 p.m. The Rotary Speed Croquet Tournament, Buffet and Auction, Saturday, July 28th. That's 12:30 to 5:30 p.m. And again, that's Federway Rotary. We've got movies in the park coming up, Ant-Man and the Wasp, Quantumania. Town Square Park, Saturday, July 29th. And again, John, what time do you think?
The movies, we try to wait for total darkness, so, because we get the best view on the screen at total darkness. So we've got it advertised, I can't remember the exact advertised time, but it's right when it gets to total darkness. But come early, we're giving away popcorn. It'll be fun.
That's great. I know. I look, you know, I purposely have not seen this one. I've been, you know, I've got a 16-year-old son, so we see all the movies that come out. I've been having him hold off on one so we could see it here. The movies are free, popcorn's free. Come on out. Just bring a blanket, a chair, and... But it does get a little chilly later into the evening. National Night Out, Tuesday, August 1st. This was so important to the council, they actually moved, by council rule, moved our first and only meeting of August to the second meeting, to the second week of August, so we can all participate in National Night Out. And so that's a great opportunity for us to talk with our neighbors, have police and fire department, council members, police, you know, members of the community meet with each other. And so we'll probably be out to at least six or seven of those locations, as will several of our council members. We've got the Fusion Gala, a yearly event at Dumas Bay Center on August 2nd, always on a Wednesday. And that's a great event to help out individuals in need, and they do a great job in our community. Okay, so that is my report. Let's see here. Now, we're on to the...
Mayor, I thought we discussed you would let the council talk about the meet and greet at this point?
Oh, yeah, let's do it. Yeah, thank you very much. You're right. Thank you for the reminder. Would you like to start, or Council President?
I'll let Council President, then I'll go after her.
Thank you to all of the community members who came to meet and greet our council, as well as our new council member, Paul McDaniel. And three of our school board members were there, Quentin Morris, Trudy Davis, and Lakeisha Phillips. And so that we were there, goodness, it was so popular, nobody wanted to go home. So it went from 11:00 to 1:00, but actually, we were there, I mean, maybe about 2:00 o'clock. And about 50 people showed up, coming and going. And they, Starbucks said they didn't realize that that many people were going to be there. They were kind of thrilled about that. And then the other thing is, some of the things we heard were, when are we going to do this again? And thank you, it was really nice to come. These are comments that we heard. Thank you for having this. It was nice to have people be able to come together, where we didn't agree, but we could talk about things civilly, in a casual manner. And so thank you to all of you who came, and we will do it again, hopefully. And I hope more people come next time.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, we had like between 50 and 60 people come and go. Starbucks would like to apologize to anyone who was there who had a delay in getting their drinks. They said that they would have staffed better had they known how many people were there. But this was the first time that we've ever done this, and so we didn't know how many people to expect. And I don't think people had to wait that long, so. It was a great time. I'd like to really thank the members of the community who came out, the Federway Mayor for putting this in their newspapers, so that people could get notified that way. It was advertised on Facebook and through the city's weekly newsletter, because I've been asked where we advertised it by people who missed it. So that's where we advertised it. We were asked if we're going to do this again by several people. And so we'll be talking to the school board directors to see if they're, they'd like to do it again and set up a time. Maybe we can do it two or three times a year. I think that would be helpful. And maybe rotate around to different areas. I've had two coffee shops volunteer to have their locations open to us next time. But it was a great time. Thank you to the school board members who came and to the city council members who came. I think that we all had a chance to meet people we didn't know, some that we knew, and answer questions. Thank you very much.
Can I add one thing, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a comment, maybe to also add the police to be there, so the public could also meet with them and talk to them as well. So that's one comment that I heard from an individual, so.
Great. Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, thanks, Council, for doing that, and a great job. Okay, now, let's go to the most important part of the evening. This is public comment. The rules are clearly stated on the pink sheets and on the agenda. And we do, I think the council asked, made it part of the rules that we ask people, identify what community they live in. We don't need your address. So green will mean go, yellow means you've got 30 seconds, red means please stop. Okay, with that, we've got quite a number of public comments. I'll go ahead and call out a few. And if you could sort of queue up generally, that way we can be ready to go one after the other. Okay, first is Matt Johnson. After Mr. Johnson, we've got Doug Johnson, Trudy Davis, Anna Patrick, Jeffrey Tancredi, Cynthia Ricks-Mackatton, and Isaiah Mackatton, and a few more. Mr. Johnson?
My name is Matt Johnson. I've been a resident of Federway for 36 years. Today, I would like to explain the definition of political hypocrisy. Political hypocrisy is losing the local primary as a Democrat, so in order to keep your power, you switch to Republican. Hypocrisy is creating an entire political identity on anti-socialist platforms while simultaneously... simultaneously taking a salary funded by taxpayers and benefiting from socialist policies like the VA, the GI Bill, or Triple P. Yes, the average member of the military benefits from a socialist system we, the people of the society, pay for. That's the very definition of socialism. I suggest anyone who doesn't know the definition, quickly update any website they own spouting anti-socialist nonsense, you don't want to look like a complete tool. I'm not anti-military, I'm anti-hypocrisy. Speaking of hypocrisy, taking an oath to protect democracy only to snatch at power the first chance you get is being a professional politician, I hope you don't claim otherwise on your website, because multiple failures to define basic government policies prove you may not be qualified to legislate. But enough singular hypocrisy, because let's face it, after 10-plus years of living under the same lame duck society, I can easily go over my three minutes. What is a lame duck society? It's a group of leaders sitting on a surplus of resources pretending to be overwhelmed with the basic job of allocating those resources while simultaneously benefiting from those resources. Then, you, that is how you get a lame duck society. It becomes less profitable to use those publicly funded resources on social programs, instead, those same ducks invite union-busting, tax-dodging, economy-wrecking, out-of-state mega conglomerates in to reshape the city in their image, only to leave after each financial crisis. I mean, it's not like the very presence of these mega millionaire enterprises have totally obliterated local businesses yet, with an Amazon Fresh in town, any vacant hole in the city is now worth $7,000 a month with triple N. Now, I want to talk about my least favorite word, fascism. Fascism is designed as a far-right authoritarian ultra-nationalistic political ideology. Its main characteristics are centralized governments based on a single party, a belief in natural hierarchy, and a full control over both the society and the economy. Now, if I remember correctly, at the last meeting, this government body sworn a hand-picked political donor and party ally to an elected position, then regularly diverted any quote "street people problem" unquote to the police. Only after some members of this city council made comments about the clothing choices of female citizens at a festival celebrating freedom that was held outside in 80-degree weather where no tents were provided, and then you all ate cake. Side note, I hope that wasn't taxpayer cake, because the comedic irony would be Shakespearean. I'm not saying that you're fascists, but the signs point to fascists adjacent. In conclusion, the next time to be, the next time be a problem, money can't fix, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
All right, Doug Johnson.
Mayor Farrell, City Council, thank you very much for having me. My message is very simple, it's first, thank you, and our great appreciation to the Housing and Basic Needs Group for the work they did with the ARPA funding, we were very grateful. I represent the Federal Way Community Caregiving Network, I have been associated with that organization for the last 35 years. I understand that some of the city council may not have recognized that organization, although I think many of you have been at our annual fundraiser, which this coming year will be on October 6th, at, from 5 to 8, at the Christian Faith Center, where we will again be trying to do our number-one goal, which is to keep families in their homes. And that is what the $175,000 that the city has proposed to allocate to the caregiving network will do in the next four years. Over and over again, the way we intend to address the issue of homelessness in our community is to keep families in their homes. We do a number of things, we, but the primary objective of our organization is housing and rent assistance. We also have two community meals each week, one at Christian Faith Center and the other at Church of the Good Shepherd. We have a community garden, which you may be associated with, which is at the Senior Center and Truman Center, helping to fund, helping to serve those people who are less fortunate, mainly the seniors in the SHAG housing, and also the seniors at the, at the Senior Center. So again, thank you very much for your support and your ARPA funding, we look forward to helping the citizens of our great city of Federal Way, and again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Trudy Davis, I think, is Ms. Davis on Zoom?
Yep, she's on Zoom, Thomas is gonna unmute.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great, so, good evening, I'm Mayor Farrell, and Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and the rest of the board members, city council members. So, first of all, you know, I, I was really thrilled to see that we have these new five officers that have decided that they would like to serve and protect our community, and in the state of where things are in the nation, and, and about police officers, that you still would take on the feet and want to be a police officer, so, thank you for that, thank you so much. Congratulations to our young, youth baseball players and where you're heading. So, what I was wanting to talk about was our homelessness population. I recently found out that we don't have a homelessness task force, or we used to, but they haven't been in existence in two years, so, I just would like to get some feedback on that, I know it can't happen tonight, if I can get an email on that, that'd be great. Also, when I think about people that are out here panhandling and saying that they need, you know, things, or food, or whatever, a lot of times, they're having kids out there with them, and that is worrisome, and I think that as a senior and people in our senior housing residents, I think sometimes they may fall for some of this, and I'm starting to find out if this is a lot of scamming, so I'm trying to figure out, how can the city warn our residents that this is going on, just give them a heads-up to be careful about people approaching them about, oh, I'm homeless, and I have these children, and things like that. So, I was wondering if we could use the read-boards that we have at 320th and 348th to just do a warning sign, or even the ones when you use when you were advertising about construction, or about any other entertainment that's happening in the city, if we can just start warning our citizens, especially our seniors, about not being drawn into some of this panhandling that may be scammers, and go Little League, represent, do your thing, I, I'm so happy for you, and hopefully, we can get people to support them, and also, thank you again to our new police officers, I know this is an incredible feat that you're gonna have to do, in spite of everything. Yes, I did attend and was a part of this past weekend's meet and greet, it was great, and yes, we will do it again, because our city needs to come together to make our city what we want it to be, thank you so much.
And thank you, and I should have, Trudy, I should have introduced you as the President of our Federal Way-
No, because I'm speaking as a citizen.
All right.
I turned my hat around.
All right, all right, thank you so much. Well, she is the President of the School Board nonetheless, so thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we've got Anna Patrick, and after Anna, we've got Jeffrey Tancredi, Cynthia Ricks-MacIntan, and then Isaiah, and then Ken Blevins, and then Evan Nelson.
Good evening. I just wanted to comment about the ARPA grants for youth programming, I saw that was on the agenda tonight, so, I know we haven't gotten the presentation, but I just wanted to add a few comments. I work in a school, and I know there's people in the community that have been looking at some of the violent activities in the schools, disruptive activities in the schools, and it has gone up. And I went to a school board meeting back in January, and some of the community members read some of the compiled police data at that council meeting, each person, one by one, read about three minutes of some of that information to the, to the school board, and we got a variety of responses, one of the, and I'm not gonna name names, but one of the youth programs was there, one of the representatives was there, and their comment was, if teachers are scared, they shouldn't be teaching, and there was a gasp in the room, naturally, it was a shocking comment, and if teachers are scared, my thought was, how do the students feel? Now, I came to our recent, it was a, what was it, youth event, where they had youth coming and talking to the city, and, and so, there was a mention of some of the activities going on in the schools, and the violence, and that sort of thing. So, I know that it's not just the teachers that are scared, I heard it, and so, what I would like the city to do is, I would like that they ensure that there's accountability, just like restorative community pathways at the county level, this is another layer, I would like the city to make sure there's accountability to these programs and what they're doing, how, how many people are they're serving, what is the impact, and what is the effect on everybody else, when we, and there has to be something beyond this, this can't be the end-all, and I think often, that's what we're counting on, is that this is it, and we need something beyond this for those, there's a lot of people being referred to these programs over and over and over again that aren't being accepted, because it's beyond what they can do. So, we need something else beyond this, and so, again, that falls on the county, to a certain extent, and we need to, as a city, speak out to that, push back on that, and I hope that you guys are doing stuff behind the scenes, haven't heard a lot about it, we'd like to know a little bit more about the different layers that are going on of diversions, and, you know, what's the accountability for all of this? So, I guess that's all I wanted to say. I know that these programs are needed, and they do good work, but we want to see the numbers, the stats, the data, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mayor, Jeff Tancredi, excuse me, Federal Way resident for 27 years. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, and Council President Kochmar, it's good to see you all. Just a couple of things, I've noticed around Federal Way, you see the, sometimes, and I'm not a perfect driver, but sometimes people get very aggressive driving around town, and they'll, you know, again, I'm not perfect, I've made my share of mistakes, but sometimes they'll be right behind you, you know, and you, you don't know if you want to look in the rearview mirror and make eye contact, or just kind of, you know, just ignore, you know, but it is, you know, it is a bit of a challenge, and it's, it's like a very aggressive type of driving, and almost like intimidation, so it's, it's a concern, I'm sure other people have dealt with it, had to deal with it. Today, I went to West Coast, West Coast Wheels, it's a business on PACC Highway, yeah, you know, as you, many of you know that, I went in there and talked to him, because he had the plyboard on the window, he, he said that somebody had backed in with their vehicle and smashed into, and broke the, you know, entrance, didn't get, really didn't get anything much, you know, very little was stolen, but that was thousands of dollars worth of, you know, to back into the store to break down the, the entrance, so, very unfortunate situation, nice guy, I think Middle Eastern-type owner, really, really nice guy, and so, I felt, you know, for him, I said, you know, there's people in the, in the city that are concerned about public safety, and I just wanted to say hello, and, you know, say hi, and say that I'm, you know, sorry that it happened, and I encouraged him to come to, you know, council meetings and speak up, and, and let this, you know, just to let him know, but anyway, it's very unfortunate to see businesses, and you see, you know, Moa, Moa, the hair salon, I see she's got a big plyboard on her window, I think that's the first time that I've seen that one, so, it's just unfortunate. O'Reilly Auto Parts, I think they have one now, in addition to where they burn, you know, somebody was burning it, whoever it was, but it's a constant challenge in our city, you know, we just want everybody to be safe, we want everybody to live in peace and harmony, but for some reason, there's forces out there that are struggling with something, and it's causing a lot of angst for a lot of business owners and residents, so, anyway, it's still a nice place to live, I enjoy being in Federal Way, wonderful people, and I've met so many great people since I've been here, so, hopefully, we can keep making things better. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Cynthia Ricks-MacIntan.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, and City Council. My name is Cynthia Ricks-MacIntan, and I'm serving a second term on the Human Services Commission, and I was the chair last year. As many of you know, I wear several hats, including working at my day job at Virginia Mason, Franciscan Health, where I address community health and health equity in our hospitals throughout King County. My office is at the great Hospital of St. Francis, right here in Federal Way. But tonight, I'm addressing you as a regular citizen, as a over-30-year resident here in Federal Way. Tonight, I'm encouraging the city council to be courageous and fully fund youth programings with ARPA funds at $150,000. Why? I'm so glad you asked that question. Number one, minimum grant award, and contract compliance. It was established that there should be $150,000 grant floor for this award, why? Because it's ARPA funding, it's federal funding. To do the contract compliance, which is very extensive, Ms. Kirkpatrick, it's very extensive, and it is cost-prohibitive if you have a contract award that is less than $150,000, it doesn't pencil out, given all of the requirements and reporting that the grantees will have to do, and the city will have to do to collect and report when we finish with the ARPA funding. So, we placed a floor of $150,000. Number two, financial literacy services have changed. I've been doing grants management for over 35 years, specifically in human services, economic development, and health, and I can tell you that it used to be that we had a lot of standalone financial literacy programs, that is not the case so much, we have since learned that it's more economically efficient and better to provide the needs and, to meet the needs and services of clients who need human services and social services, to include budgeting and financial literacy within those programs, not as a standalone, but as incorporated into all of those other programs that are being provided. And therefore, when an RFP was done for financial literacy in the amount of $200,000, and there are still five organizations that do just financial literacy in South King County, they were sent the RFP, among other organizations, we received no applications, why? Because the majority of the organizations now incorporate that in there. And lastly, staff time and workload. If you fund those projects at $125,000, which is below the minimum, right, that means that when staff are contracting with those youth organizations for the $125,000, they're reissuing, so they're duplicating services, doing another RFP again, if the RFP comes back and no one has applied, staff has to go back and renegotiate those contracts, that's a lot of workload for them to do that, as well as for those organizations. So, let's send a message to our youth, we love them, let's fund those projects at $150,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Isaiah MacIntan.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, and City Council Members. My name is Isaiah MacIntan, and I am here tonight to request that this council fully fund youth programs at $150,000. This is Item B under Council Business. I am 15-years-old, going into the 10th grade, and I am a resident here in Federal Way, my home school is Decatur Go Gators. As some of you know, I have addressed the city, the council, a few times, to discuss the need for city funding of positive programs that prepare us youth to be amazing citizens. This is an excellent opportunity for the council to invest in positive youth programs that will help us become better leaders, improve our mental health, teach us how to control our emotions, and help those youth who are struggling daily because they face homelessness or pressing issues. Don't let us down, please make us the youth of the city a priority, be by fully funding the youth programs at $150,000. We are the future, if you invest in us today, can you imagine just how amazing we will be when we are able to vote, start families, and run for elected positions? We are counting on you, we need your support. One of the amazing organizations that considered, is considered for funding is Phenomenal Shee. I have volunteered with this mentoring program for a few years now, they do incredible work in the community, including food and clothing drives to help young girls and their families who experience food, housing, and economic- young girls and their families who experience food, housing and economic insecurities. I have seen how girls with low self-esteem have, having been bullied and traumatized because of bad things that happened to them in life, are able to grow, are able to laugh and get out of homelessness because of Phenomenal She. We need youth programs like Phenomenal She that say, no matter what you faced in life, you are capable, special and you are worthy. After the pandemic, we need programs like this more than ever. Please fund Phenomenal She and the other youth programs like Build to Lead and the Boys and Girls Club of Federal Way at $100,000, $150,000. Don't cut their funding. That $25,000 in funding cuts could make, mean the difference between serving 10 more youth with mental health or the loss of some of those youth who didn't get support and ended up harming themselves. Invest in us, make us a priority so we can have better versions of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. All right, Ken Blevins.
Counsel, Mayor, thanks for having, listening to me today. I'm Ken Blevins, a citizen of Federal Way for 51 years. And just wanted to say a few things. I actually wanted to touch on what they were just talking about. I'm all for funding kids programs, anything that helps any kids that are falling through the cracks. Definitely we need people to, to be there. I'm hoping that when funding goes to these places, that there's actual reporting on what they're doing with the money. I think it would be great if they have some kind of volunteer staff on there, a certain percentage, that they actually grassroots brings the community together. And then if they need funding to be able to help them compete their, or complete their, their mission, then, then they could, then the extra money could really go a long ways. But, or, you know, obviously these places are probably getting donations too, but I think it would be well worth it for the city. But you don't just give the money away, hopefully. And I'm sure you guys are doing your due diligence to make sure it's going to the right programs. So youth are very important to our city. So they are the future, like this young gentleman was talking about. So I'm glad that he was up here talking. It's pretty cool to see these guys. So anyways, I also wanted to talk about the homeless drug addiction problem. I'm always talking about that, but I just, I'm only, I'm only talking more about it lately because with Tacoma and Seattle clearing out their cities and sending them over here, it's been more obvious that there are more homeless drug addicts that are new to our city and they're coming into town and stealing our carts and doing our thing. But we are prepared for this. We've got ordinances, we've got enough police. You said we're almost at record number, but I also want to let everybody else know, and I think we're realizing this, is that even though we might be at record number of cops, we have a lot of new ones. And so a lot of new guys that don't know necessarily how to, to make police stops, so they're still getting help and teaching. Luckily, we have a lot of really good, experienced cops that are still here that are helping them out with that. And we noticed that in the, the last couple of weeks when we've had, you know, people moving up in, in rank. And I'm really happy about that. And so I, when I come out here and I like complain about like homeless drug addicts and that's not basically enforcing the, the ordinances that we actually have on the books that could take care of a lot of this stuff. I also don't want to be, like, I'm not talking down to our cops. I know they're dealing with a lot with, with less. And so God bless our cops out there, you know? Thanks, guys, for working really hard. I just want, hoping that the city will focus and make sure that we are working on these things as we see them and not just like wait around or so on. We can stop them, grab those carts. I saw a guy over at, that went from 312th Walmart all the way to Warehouser and Highway 18 with a Walmart cart. And there were two Walmart carts over there. I'm like going, I mean, I know that we had some guys driving by, could have probably stopped them, but anyways, we can always improve. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, Ken. Evan Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda and Council Members. My name is Evan Nelson. I am a mentor at The Game of Life. I work with Winston Bell, Rico Row and Lamont Stiles at The Game of Life. I have been fortunate to serve and mentor the youth and the young men and adult, young adults of Federal Way for six or seven years. I have been at The Game of Life since 2017 and we were seeing up to maybe 120 kids per week before the pandemic hit from 17 to 20, to 2020. When the pandemic hit, we lost contact with a lot of our kids. So, you know, the funding went down. We lost our base. You know, we need a base to, to get to these kids or we're having these kids come to the EX3 and Telokota Middle School. And with the pandemic hitting, I seen a rise in crime, seen a rise in grief and a rise in trauma that the youth are going through. And we need this funding, the ARPA funding, to keep these kids out of trouble so we can help them get jobs, help them get into school, keep them out of the system so that the new officers, Officer Adams, Officer, the three Joshuas and Officer Tiana, that they don't have to deal with things that we can do as a community. So we are asking to keep the funding at $150,000 for these programs so that we can help Federal Way be a more productive and vibrant community. I know it sounds cliche, but help us help you so that we can all win. We use sports as a conductor to, to get to these kids. So in May, we held a basketball tournament at Thomas Jefferson High School, called the King and Queens of the Courts. So we're connecting back with our youth, we're getting our numbers up. We, we've been bike riding, we've been kayaking. We partnered with Phenomenal She, we did the Juneteenth celebration. We attended President's Pipeline School Play with some of our kids. I think some teachers should see that. You know, when you, when you're dealing with trauma and grief and you gotta go to school on an empty stomach, you're gonna act out. You're gonna have, you know what I'm saying? Nobody's 100% every day. When you have obstacles like that, you know, things like that happen. So that's why we need mentors. And I would have greatly benefited from having mentors as a kid. So with that, I say thank you. And I just ask that you please, please keep the funding at $150,000 for these programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. All right. Oops. We've got Justin Nujenga, Winston Bell, Betty Taylor and Alex Milston. And Justin, please let me know if I got your name horribly wrong.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Honda and the City Council. This is my first time at a City Council meeting, so I'm a little nervous. I've been in Federal Way for 18, I think maybe 19 years. I'm 25 years old and I'm here to talk about the ARPA funding. And I'm here to advocate for youth programs to receive ARPA funding and keeping it at I've been privileged to be part of one of the youth programs called Game of Life here in Federal Way. And I would say it's changed my life completely. I used to work here at the local Panera Bread and I really thought there was no hope for my life, but then just that Panera Bread is close to a place called the EX3 Center. So I found out about what was going on over there. They had sports mentoring with Game of Life. And I thought there was no hope for my life because I was just working at Panera. I didn't know what to do. I showed up at Game of Life and I learned so much. This is a place that's been safe, it's been positive, it's been encouraging for me. And now through Game of Life, I learned about leadership skills, financial literacy, conflict resolution, the consequences of drug use, the consequences of crime. I learned about mental fitness. We used to hoop or play basketball four times a week before the pandemic hit, but then once that happened, of course, funding went down. It was a disaster. I mean, I think Mr. Evan talked about 120, I think it was up to 200 guys, to be honest. I was, I started going there when I was, hmm, let's see, 21 years old. And I saw guys that looked just like me. I saw different minority groups in there that I probably never would have connected with, but I would say this thing has changed my life tremendously to the point now, I was encouraged to go to school. And when I was encouraged to go to school, I became a respiratory care practitioner through the encouragement of this program. And I, I looked at it and I was like, man, if this is what this program has helped me, how many other people would benefit from funding this program so that we can have a better youth in our community? And I look forward for one day to even volunteering back into this community to help others like myself reach the level they need to reach. And I think this, this program has been effective with helping with college readiness. It's gotten so many guys into trades and overall, it's been a safe place. I think a lot of young people can advocate for this. And so I'm just, my ask today is to keep the funding at $150,000 because this has changed so many lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Winston Bell.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell. Good evening, Tran. I feel like I'm personal friends with a lot of the folks on the Council because I've worked so closely with many of them. So, and congratulations to the newest, Mr. McDaniel. I'm here today to speak about the ARPA funding, the $150,000 that's in question. Winston Bell, I am the Executive Director of Game of Life. So I really appreciate everybody coming out to our Juneteenth events. We have several connections to community spaces, to the Federal Way School District is one of our partners. South King Fire and Rescue is another one of our partners. We were in the process of having a training partnership with the Federal Way Police Department up until the time when the pandemic happened. So I really want to say thank you to our sports programs and congratulate the Federal Way baseball team for the state championship. I want to congratulate the Federal Way High School State Champion Track Team. One of the things that I wish I could see is at some point, those athletes coming back into the fold and getting positions and being hired by the city to actually work in the city that they live and were raised in. They are right now strutting around with their uniforms on and telling how much they enjoyed winning the championship for the city. It is my hope that one day we can see some of those same minority young men come back and get jobs so they can, we all want to walk around with our chest stuck out and say that we've provided and done well for not only our cities, but for our families. And we are not seeing that with our young people. Not just our young people of color, but none of our young people. Many of them are moving out of the city and going and working in different jobs. So that's one of my needs. One of the greatest, I think, victories is hearing a young man like Justin step up here and talk about what Game of Life has done for him. Justin, again, has been one of our proudest pupil, but we have many just like Justin. Over the course of COVID, we were able to hand out 30, I'm sorry, 25,000 meals, free hot meals in collaboration with Operation Sack Lunch and that was prepared by Cedar Brook Lodge. You know, those are some heavy names and they believe in us. And we want to continue to make those type of connections and allow everybody to see the great work we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the work you do, Winston. Betty Taylor. And then Alex Milston. And as she's making her way over here, do we have anybody online or anybody?
No, I don't see anybody with their hand raised. I don't have anybody else signed up.
All right. Betty, the floor is yours.
My name is Betty Taylor and I am on the Human Service Commission, but I need to wear a hat of speaking as a private citizen. I can't. That's gonna be hard for me to do. Okay, it really is. Because Jack may come out the box, okay? I'm just saying. Shoot. But anyway, okay, I am, I am concerned about the ARPA funds as well. I'm concerned about the agencies that, that when I get funded. I, I am just concerned about the work that I know that, I know the, I know there's a procedure. I know the procedure is for like the Human Services Commission to, to read the information, read the, and, and read the applications, score the applications. Next step is to give the applications to the City Council for approval. And I stepped out of line, right? I see it.
Oh, no, you, can you push the, pull the mic down towards you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we could hear you?
Okay.
You could pull it a little bit.
Pull it down. Okay.
Can we, can we pause the timer for a second? Could you add a minute? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Betty. We just need to make sure we hear you.
Okay. So I'm trying to calm, calm myself down. I really am trying to calm myself down because I know that, that I know the work that has gone into the application process. I know the work that has gone into the reading, the applications. I know the, the, the sleepless days and the sleepless nights. I know the coming, I know about the coming together as a, as one. It's kind of hard for me when I hear that the work that was, the work that was done wasn't, wasn't at all accepted. So anyway, yeah, and I'm trying to get a clear understanding, just a clear understanding because it's gonna, it's almost like we have to do, redo, redo it all over again. So I don't know, a lot of people don't know what I'm talking about and I can't, I can't talk about it up here, but anyway, I, I agree with Cynthia and everybody else that talked about the ARPA fund, funding. To redo the work, to redo is not, it's just, it's, it's gonna be hard to, you know, after, after all the work has been already done and they have to redo it again. It's almost like we're starting from day one again. And that takes time. It takes energy. And we would like to, we would like the City Council to accept what was basically given and so that these agencies can be funded.
All right, thank you, Betty. Alex Milston.
Hey, my name is Alex Milston and I'm a resident of Federal Way and I'm 17, almost 18 though.
Almost 18 tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
I want to talk about the meet and greet. I attended it and it was great being able to speak with a lot of members. And one of the really good things about it is that I feel like it can have the opportunity to get people more civically engaged, especially people who haven't been engaged before. And I think doing stuff like that can be really healthy for the city since it brings in new voices, new perspectives, and all that goes doubly for youth as well. I feel like they, like youth, like myself and others, learn a lot from stuff like this and, and youth can also bring a lot to the city as well. So I feel like especially finding ways of getting youth more civically engaged could be good. And on that note, or on that topic, I hope that you And on that note, or on that topic, I hope that, um, you keep the ARPA funds at a hundred and fifty K for, um, youth. I, I learned more about the stuff with the ARPA funds yesterday when I attended the Human Services Commission. And, and yeah, I hope that more is done for, uh, the youth here. And also I'd like to thank the, uh, Game of Life mentoring people. They do a lot of good work here. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you all so much, uh, for, uh, your, uh, your input and your suggestions and your, and your, um, uh, coming before the council and letting us know, uh, your thoughts. All right, let's move on to item number six under presentations. We've got South King County Fire and Rescue Update. Captain Brad Chaney, PIO.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President and Council Members, and also our community members. My name is Brad Chaney. I grew up here in Federal Way, just right off Three Twentieth and Military. Been working for South King Fire for about fifteen years. My job title now is Public Information Officer, Community Affairs and Public Education. Basically, my entire job is to help bridge the gap between the fire district and our community members when you're not using us in a nine-one-one fashion. I have a small presentation for you here today. What we've discovered over the last few years is we've kind of lost traction because of COVID. We haven't been able to do presentations. So I'm just gonna whip through a ten-minute presentation that's very high level about the fire district and the services that we provide. Perfect. Okay, so South King Fire, we actually cover the cities of Federal Way and Des Moines and parts of unincorporated King County. So basically from Tacoma all the way up to Normandy Park, from the Puget Sound all the way over to Military Road, be kind of before you start to drop down into the valley, altogether forty-one square miles. With that comes a hundred and sixty thousand community members that we, uh, that we serve and protect. Last year in two thousand and twenty-two, we ran twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. Your fire district is comprised of a hundred and fifty-seven firefighters. It's supported by thirty-six day staff personnel. That's everything from HR, finance, IT, and everything in between. We have seven responding stations, one logistics and fleet center. Logistics is basically everything that helps us run, all the way from paper towels to hand soap to our bunker gear and our uniforms. And then, of course, the fleet center, that's our mechanics. Uh, so basically now we are able to do everything in-house to take care of your fire engines instead of having to outsource it and rely on somebody else. And then we have a training station. That was the first picture that you saw. Our training station is actually now a regional asset as well. When you think about King County Fire Departments, everything south of Seattle, north of Tacoma is what we call Zone Three. Zone Three, we all work together collaboratively. We took the best of the best and the brightest of the brightest, put them all together in the same building for a training consortium down in Kent. And now we all do everything the exact same. Command procedures and the way that we run fires and we run incidents, it's all done together. So you might see other agencies using our station because there's some things you can do at ours that you can't do at theirs. Daily resourcing. Most people know firefighters work twenty-four hour shifts. So out of a twenty-four hour shift, our new staffing, we're hoping to have up to twenty-nine personnel on duty. There's some qualifications there that we can't really dive into deeply, but essentially what you would have is one battalion chief. They're responsible for the entire shift for twenty-four hours, all seven stations, all the calls, training, paperwork, everything that happens. You would have four aid cars. Most people don't know this, but your firefighters are first responders. We're also EMTs. A lot of what we do is medical work. So we use aid cars to help provide a buffer for the fire engines to make sure that the fire engines can be in service longer for those catastrophic events like fires. We also have a ladder. That's the big fire truck with the big ladder on top, extends out a hundred and five feet. We don't have a lot of high-rise here into the city of Federal Way, but we have a lot of mid-rises. And that ladder truck allows us the opportunity to access the roofs or even the upper floors during an emergency. Talk about our calls. Twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine. Seventy-seven percent of that was medical. That's everything from broken bones, lacerations, heart attacks, and to scenes of violence. COVID-nineteen was a huge one. Scenes of violence, thankful for our law enforcement partners. They come in, they secure the scene. We quickly go in. We do have bulletproof vests. We're able to treat patients and extricate them in a rapid fashion. False alarm, good intent. That's a really large number, but I want to kind of explain that just a little bit. What that means is if there's a smoke alarm or a fire alarm that goes off, but yet there's no fire. Anybody embarrassingly, uh, like me, accidentally burnt popcorn in the microwave, accidentally burnt some toast. If that happens in an apartment complex, it triggers the system and, of course, we get dispatch. We get there, we find out, hey, there's nothing there. It just happens a lot. We have a lot of large communities where mistakes happen and that's okay. Good intent means canceled and route. We got I-5 and Pac Highway, accidents happen, people drive by, call nine-one-one, hey, there's a car accident, I think they're injured. We get there, hey, we're not injured. We're just pulling over and exchanging information. Okay, it happens. We're always trying to combat that. Fire, three percent. Thankfully, we've done a great job of public education, building codes. We're integrated here in the city of Federal Way to be a part of the building process, code, um, understanding code enforcement and all that. Uh, so we've done a good job on reducing it, but three percent is actually still a lot. In two thousand and twenty-two, we ran a hundred and thirty-six building fires. Mayor, you're probably familiar with this one. This was a three-alarm fire. I can't get into all the resources, we don't have the time. But essentially, we have a package that we deliver on the first alarm. We almost double that for the second alarm and then we'll add even more resources for a third alarm. That means there's a large potential for loss of life and that this is, can be a really large incident. This picture that you see here was up off of Twenty-first Avenue Southwest and Three-Fifty-Six. It's the Terra Apartments. They had a three-alarm fire. Thirty-six units were destroyed. We were able to thankfully contain it to one building. What happened, it started in the second floor, broke out the window, went to the third floor, continued to get bigger, hit the eaves. Once it hits the eaves, it gets into the attic space. Once it gets into the attic space in a hot August day, it runs the length of the roof and it burns the roof off really, really fast. We were able to keep this to just that one building, as the mayor knows because he was there to support. They're all stacked right next to each other. So that was, that was a successful save. We did end up rescuing one person off of the backside of the building on the third floor. Worked in graveyard, fell asleep, wakes up, hearing all this commotion. The roof was caving in up above her and there's fire in there. We also had multiple pets that we saved. So this video here, that's actually the patient. She woke up, she popped her head out on that third floor balcony. We were able to, uh, just throw ladders up there because we were prepared in advance. You can see the fire just right above her head, right where that firefighter's helmet is up at the top. That's the fire, right above her head. The pet on the left-hand side, covered in soot, washed it off with some, uh, bottled water and gave it some fresh oxygen. We know furries and furry animals and all those, they're part of your family. We care about them too. And we do have pet masks that we can use to help take care of them. Firefighters are not just firefighters and EMTs. We also have a couple other layers, special teams. I'm just gonna run through those real quick. The technical rescue team, really highly trained in confined space, structural collapse, rope rescue. Those are the people in the rope harness hanging off the side of the building, willing to pull you out of the, out of the window. Trench rescue is what you see here. That was the fatality trench collapse that happened in Renton last year. We were a part of that. The person you see here, he's considered the godfather of trench. He basically built the entire system in South King County that makes these trench collapse, uh, responses, um, possible. And then they're also trained in swift water. We do respond down into the Green River to help as well. Next one is the marine team. Everybody remembers not too long ago in Tacoma, they had the ship fire, the toxic smell. It was absolutely awful. Our marine vessel went down there to help. What we do is we actually show up and we help cool the outside of the vessel so that it doesn't break apart. The welds can pop if it gets too hot. You keep it cool, the fire inside goes out, and then you can actually rebuild the vessel from the inside out. And it just filled up with diesel fuel, so we want to make sure we don't sink it because that would, that would be disastrous for the Puget Sound. They're really good at navigation, search and rescue, vessel assist, fire suppression, and close-quarter maneuvering. That's just being able to operate in very close quarters, um, to mitigate whatever the emergency is. Hazardous materials. I was actually a hazmat technician, loved it. We're the guys that will put on the full encapsulating suit with their breathing apparatus and walk through a toxic cloud of smoke to go shut off a valve or stop a leak. We love it. It's really, really crazy, just make sure you don't puncture your suit. Really good at biological and chemical radiation, um, responses, air monitoring. If we had some sort of big accident on I-5 and there's a leak, we can actually determine where it's going and then we can work with our law enforcement partners to evacuate appropriately. Patching, plugging, makes sense. Technical and mask decon. Mask decon, technical is basically one-on-one. Mask decon is if we have a big outbreak, something happens, we can run quite a few hundred people through a large tent and get them showered up, fresh clothes, and decontaminated. Uh, advanced decon of virus and bacteria, that's from COVID. That was a huge deal. And then we're getting a new drone. We got a grant for that with infrared capabilities. Some chemicals, they don't like to play nice with each other. So when there's a bad accident and chemicals start to react, they put off a lot of heat and we can detect that using the infrared technology. The last one that I want to talk about is our rescue swimmers. This is our, one of our newer programs. It was implemented about ten years ago. Very progressive. We were the first agency in South King County to bring this, um, bring this to the fire service. There used to be dive teams. Dive teams are in the recovery business. We're in the rescue business. So this is all about rapid entry. They have their own suits, they have their own flippers, their own, uh, snorkels and goggles. And we have thirty-eight that are, um, dispersed throughout the entire district. They're on different shifts at different stations. That means when there's a water emergency, the likelihood of you having a rescue swimmer on that apparatus is really high. They're really good at rapid entry, obviously. Search and rescue, they can do dive patterns, they freedive, they don't have a scuba tank. Um, and then we just got a new inflatable rescue boat. Five Mile Lake, we had a drowning earlier this year. It was kind of far out into the lake. The rescue boat is not the primary deployment. The rescue swimmer still swims out there. We can fill up the rescue boat, get it out there and then use it as a platform for which we base our searches off of. It'll give the rescue swimmers an opportunity to take a break as they continue to their search. How am I doing on time, sir? Perfect. I'm just gonna wrap it up with this one story to talk about the rescue swimmer program. We live in a beautiful area. Puget Sound is absolutely amazing. Unfortunately, sometimes bad things happen. We had a nineteen-year-old girl who thought she was at the end of her rope. She decided to drive herself into the Puget Sound, um, to commit suicide. What happens is the vehicle gets out into the water and it starts to fill up with water in the engine compartment and it starts to float away from the shore. As it floats away and it starts to fill up, it starts to nose down, and then eventually it will go actually under the surface. The first rig showed up and it had a rescue swimmer on there. Rescue swimmer was already dressed up, ready to go, runs out to the water, flippers on, they're off. This vehicle's already about fifty yards off of the shore and continuing to get further away and about ten feet underwater. Rescue swimmer gets to the vehicle, he can see the headlights underneath the surface. It's late at night, swims down, identifies there's one patient in the driver's seat. Comes back up. During that whole time, the second fire engine showed up with another rescue swimmer who was already there. As he comes up to catch his breath, he looks out, there's the other rescue swimmer. Quick face-to-face conversation, says I've got one driver's side. Okay. They swim back down together. They have a special tool, they break the window, reach in, cut the seatbelt, yard the patient out of the vehicle, bring her up to the surface. They then swim her about fifty yards back to the shore. She's met by law enforcement who's protecting the scene, King County Medic One, that's a separate system for us, and more firefighters. They initiate CPR, transport her to Harborview Medical Center where ultimately she was resuscitated. It took her a while, it took her a little over a year, but she came back with her family to say thank you for the second chance at life. And those two gentlemen, we awarded the Medal of Valor. It's things like this that your fire district does and practices on a regular basis to be good at it, but we don't like to brag about it. We try and be quiet. That's not our job is to brag about what we do. My goal here is not to brag about the fire district, but just to at least share with you that you have these services that are right there at the fingertip anytime that you dial nine-one-one, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have, Mayor.
Great. First of all, Captain, thank you very much. Great job. Uh, Council, any ques, Councilmember Sephardoson?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and for the work that you do, uh, for serving our communities. Two questions. One is where does the, um, boat reside?
Great question. The boat actually is housed at the Des Moines Marina. And the, uh, Station Sixty-seven, which is in Des Moines, is just right up the street off of Two Twenty-third. That's the crew that responds down to the, to the vessel.
Okay. And then my second question is, um, are, are some of these volunteers?
Negative.
So all of our firefighters?
Right. And in our, in our district, we're all, um, professional firefighters. We are looking at, um, creating a new explorer program. Uh, big fan of Game of Life and Winston and all the work that they're doing. Uh, we are looking at creating our own explorer program that can kind of help bridge some of that gap as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, item B, proclamation and National Disability Independence Day. Uh, Councilmember Sephardoson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Emerson Seekins to, um, Executive Director of Northwest Access Fund to step, um, to the podium. And I'll read the pro, proclamation and when I'm done, uh, while I make my way to you, you can start, um, share anything you want with us.
Sounds great.
And thank you for being here. Proclamation, National Disability Independence Day. Whereas National Disability Independence Day commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, into law on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas the act is a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas the legislation has been a driving force in moving America closer to the promise of equal opportunity, full participation, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for the sixty-one million individuals with disabilities living in the United States. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by providing protection from employment discrimination as well as better access to goods, services, and communications. And whereas while we commemorate this progress, we know our work to expand opportunity and confront the stigma that persists surrounding disabilities is not yet finished. Now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way do hereby proclaim July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three as National Disability Independence Day and encourage the city of Federal Way to reaffirm the principles of equality and inclusion laid out in the ADA and recommit our efforts to reach full ADA compliance so that every person in our city has the opportunity to succeed. Signed this eighteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three. So if you want to say anything while I come down?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate, um, the time and the proclamation. Um, I'm Emerson Seekins. I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Access Fund. I've, uh, been a disability advocate for the last twenty years and, uh, July twenty-sixth is always, and the month of July is actually Disability Pride Month, uh, is always a time to reflect on the, the milestones and accomplishments that the disability community have hard fought and won, uh, in order to be further integrated and included at all levels, uh, of our community. And I say hard fought intentionally and I, as Lydia mentioned in the proclamation, that there, there is more work to do. But to where we are right now, it's important to celebrate how that happened from twenty-three day sit-ins for the Section Five-O-four and Joseph Calafano's office in the city of San Francisco, to be able to get federal protections as the initial federal legislation for nondiscrimination. And then to literally coming, uh, before buses to be able to get access to accessible transportation, to, uh, climbing up the steps of the Capitol, um, to be able to sign the ADA in nineteen ninety. And so I think it's very important to recognize how, uh, these rights were won and also that now each generation has taken that to the next step and to further create an inclusive society. My organization, Northwest Access Fund, we're a nonprofit and a community development financial institution. Uh, we provide, um, funding and financing for people with disabilities, primarily low income, to be able to afford, um, assistive technologies like hearing aids, wheelchair-accessible vehicles, um, to action track chairs, which is the hybrid of a, of a tank and a wheelchair, uh, to be able to make sure that folks have access to this independence that was so far, so hard won, um, by, by generations before. And so, uh, we also, I mean, financial literacy has been mentioned multiple times tonight. We run a financial coaching program primarily for low-income folks to help them budget, to be able to run their credit report, understand how much medical debt that they're under, uh, understand charity care programs. understand charity care programs, and then also to offer information about their public benefits. Any change to income or assets can make it so someone's no longer eligible for Section 8 housing, or for Medicaid, or for SNAP, and so people come to us often with very confusing letters, and we're grateful for the opportunity, and we're publicly funded by the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy, and we work in Federalway and, and King County with our, with our work as well. So I appreciate, I'll stop there, but I appreciate the opportunity to accept this proclamation and for the work that the City of Federalway has been doing for accessibility purposes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, next we are on to item seven, Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. First, Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
Right, thank you, Mayor. First, I was out of town on vacation last week, was not there for the, the committee meeting, and I would like to thank Councilmember Asefa Dawson for chairing the meeting, and thank you very much for that. And there are several items on the consent agenda, and then another item later on that was reviewed in the, in the committee. In August, there will not be a Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting, our next one will be on September 12th, right here at 5:00. And that is my report.
All right, thank you. Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Tron for running the committee last week, he, I think the record was 41 minutes or 47 minutes, something like that?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, anyway, it was, he ran a great meeting, and I appreciate all that were here. I was out of town and was able to attend via the Zoom system. But our next meeting will be August 7th, 2023, and I've asked Councilmember Walsh to chair that for me, as I'll be out of the country for a few weeks in August. And we have a few things that are on the consent agenda tonight, having to do with grants and transportation that was shepherded through our committee, thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tron.
So the pressure is on Mr. JW here to beat my record for the land use committee.
Challenge accepted.
Mayor, our next meeting is going to be on July 25th at 5:00 PM in this room, thank you.
All right, thank you. Logic Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asefa Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, there's nothing to report on.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I attended the PIC meeting on, I guess it was last Wednesday, and we talked about affordable housing, committee charter review, regional emergency management coordination, and salary setting processes for cities, which is all over the place, I didn't realize that there was such a broad range of how that's done. The sad news that came out of that meeting was Haley Willis, who has been working with SCA for about two years, is moving on, and I'll miss her, she has staffed the committees that I serve on for SCA, so we'll be without somebody for a little bit, but good luck to her in the future. Today, I attended the skateboard meeting, and we heard about the improvements at the airport, the improvements that they have recently made, that they are currently making, and that they're planning on making in the next 20 to 30 years. So it sounds like the whole airport will look much, much different than what it looks like now, from parking to driving up to dropping people off to ticketing to the whole thing, which I would say after being there, they certainly serve a lot of people, and it's way too small for the amount of people that they serve. And I attended a webinar today from AWC on public safety and retail crime, which was fascinating, and the person who was a speaker is, his name is Mark Johnson with the Washington Retail Association. He is willing to come to speak to councils and to police departments about what they recommend for retail organizations and police departments in cities for theft and all the issues, the crime issues that are happening. He also, they, he talked about a state program that police departments can join, I don't know if ours is a member of it, the Washington Orca Organization Chief, I don't know if we're a member of that, but it's not open to the public, it's open for police officers and retail folks, but I can be-
Yes, we're involved with the organization, and we participate, regional meetings with them.
Anyway, I was wondering if maybe we wanted Mr. Johnson to come and talk to us about what they recommend that cities and councils and, and retail establishments do for safety and for theft and things like that.
Yeah, we had a retail theft summit a year ago, and he was a, was-
Was he a speaker?
But I'll talk to the chief about it, let's see, and actually, I know Mark Johnson for the past 30 years, actually, yeah, a great, great person, and in a great position. He was actually, remember, he was actually, we had the president of the Retail Association come to the chamber, and he was with her. So we'll talk about it internally, maybe we can pursue this.
Yeah, okay. Also, I am attending a conference right now. It's in Tacoma, which is really cool because it's not costing anything, it's a free conference for National League of Cities, and it's their summer leadership conference, it's always held in the city of which the National League of Cities President lives in, so it's in Tacoma this year. I'll be actually going tomorrow, I didn't attend today because there wasn't anything I, I needed to be there for today, but for the next three days, I'll be attending workshops on emergency shelters, housing and transit workshops, and my committee that I will be meeting with is information and technology, and we have meetings on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So that will be interesting, it's, it's kind of weird to be at a conference and not be there, you know, it's kind of weird. So anyway, that's what I'm doing this week, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Council President.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and when we have Mark Johnson come, it would be maybe a good thing to invite some of our business managers or owners to be here as well, because they're the ones that really need to hear that information, what they recommend. I'd like to ask her a report, and I'd like to tell you a story, give you a little more fun here, a story, but I'd like to ask her a report on shopping carts, on how we're doing on our sidewalk ordinance, which is no sit, no sleep, no lie on the sidewalks, and then how we're doing with the fentanyl ordinance. We're just, I, it's kind of like guacamole, you get one area taken care of, and then there's another area that pops up, so I'd just like to know how we're doing on all that.
Okay, next council meeting, Stephanie, let's add it as an item, we'll have the chief and deputy chief be available to give a role.
Yeah, I think that at one point, we had talked about putting up a sign on 320th and Pack Highway, for example, that said, do not donate to, and do not give money to panhandlers, but donate to charitable. I don't know if we have, if we dropped that, or if we're gonna follow through on that, but maybe you could just sort of look into that, I'm just wondering. So here's the story. So probably, I don't know if Captain Cheney was here at the time, he was at the fire department at the time, but we were down at Wooton Park, which is the park down by Des Moines, when my daughter, who's a registered nurse, and her family, a couple of kids, and she was pregnant, and we were down at the park, and I was actually at, when Salty's was open, and they had their little snack bar, I was down there buying clam chowder to take over to the picnic in the park, when I saw my daughter rushing down to the beach there by Salty's, and they were pulling a woman out of the water who was in a dive suit, who had drowned, and they had found her at the, another person had swum by and found her laying on the bottom of the, in the sand, just staring straight up, no mask on, pulled it off, with eyes open, and they pulled her out, they pulled her over to the sand, and my daughter went down there and started working on her, pump, 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 and, and then she even started giving her mouth-to-mouth, which is a little worrisome because it's during COVID. And she was, the woman was dead, she was blue, I, I saw her, I was shocked. Her son was diving with her, he was crying his heart out, it was just horrible scene. Our firefighters rushed down there with their medic one unit, and they were taking her out on a, on a gurney, and I thought, oh my goodness, this is just a terrible thing. When we get a call, a few months later, unbelievably, and I was actually at a meeting where this woman was a secretary to somebody higher up at King County, and she had survived.
Wow.
She had, so this, I'm telling you the story so you know never to give up, so she was taken to Harborview, and she said, all she remembers is everything was black, and she woke up at Harborview and was wondering what all the commotion was all about. And I saw her, she was, she was blue, and then we met her when they gave my daughter an award at the fire department. She was beautiful, she was a beautiful woman, actually a gorgeous woman, I, I was just shocked. So I guess the story, the moral to the story is, don't, don't give up, if, if you find a drowning victim, just don't stop. And another woman happened to be there who was also diving, who was a medic up in Seattle, and she went, she got there behind my daughter and took over, and she was like, it's not just a pound, it's a wow, break though, to get that going, and amazing.
Wow.
So I only tell you the story, just so, pass it on.
Yeah, that's a great story, thank you, because it is, you know, people faced with that, maybe would think, you know, they should stop, but that, that's-
Dry river lakes, still lake.
Wow, that's great, all right. All right, thank you, especially as hot as it is, people are getting in the water, and it is, it can be so dangerous, so thank you for that. Okay, consent agenda, these items have gone through committee, can be passed all at once, but after I read them, I'll ask if a council will want an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the July 5, 2023, regular and special meeting minutes. Item B, Global Kitchen, doing business as K Catering, Amendment 1, additional compensation for Dumas Bay Center catering services. C, parking lot sweeping, request for proposal, RFP. D, law enforcement, ISO, claim search access, memorandum of understanding, MOU. Item E, interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn and the City of Federalway for continued leasing of office space for the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force, PSATT. F, ARPA grants for housing stability and basic needs. G, resolution, accepting transportation grant, city center. H, authorization apply for transportation safety grant. I, former Bridges Barn Debolition Project Approval to Award. J, South 288 Street Road Diet Project Phase 1 Authorization to Award. K, Authorization to Accept King County Flood Reduction Grant. Council, are there any items on A through K that you would want pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item F, just so we can show people what the grants are being, who they're made to.
All right, great. Anyone else? Councilmember Asefa Dawson? Are you just getting ready to vote? Okay, all right, Council President Cochmar, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, I move items A through E and items G through K for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of A through E and G through K?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those matters pass. Item F, ARPA grants for housing stability and basic needs, would be best to address that.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to pull that because this is such a monumental time in our history of a city where we got tremendous amount of money from the federal government, and it's been allocated to some great opportunities and great funds, and I just think it's important that we have a, something on the board so the citizens can actually see how hard the committees worked, and the staff, and how that money's being distributed.
Very good, thank you very much. Sarah, is that something you would, okay, very good, well, come on up, or come on down, as they say, on the show. And I don't know, do we have a, do we have the, we probably have it in our materials, the committee, or do you have it handy?
Yes, I, I will, if you don't mind, I'll use that committee presentation from last week.
Look at you all ready to go.
Benefit of having presentations that-
Exactly. And no assistance from Thomas.
Not yet, they're still fine.
Knock on wood.
Okay. So I will present-
Great job, Sarah.
At least nobody has identified that I have a tech issue tonight, it certainly happens, but thank you, Mayor Farrell, Council President Cochmar, Deputy Mayor Handan, members of the council. Tonight, I'll be giving you an overview of the ARPA grants for housing stability and basic needs. The policy question is, should city council approve the recommendations for awarding housing stability and basic needs grants funded by ARPA lost revenue? I'll go over this, I think it's useful to, I'm just going to see the structure of our funding, and a few other grant applications and processes that the city has, and I'll speak briefly to the city's process from application through evaluation and compliance as well for, for awareness. The city has two regular grant funding sources, one is the Human Services General Fund that operates on a biennial basis, it's $711,900 per year for each year, so 2023 and in 2024. We would anticipate that would continue based on city budgeting, that of course, there can be some changes to that amount. Additionally, we have the Community Development Block Grant, or CDVG. This funding source is ongoing, the city receives those funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. There is a shared application between the general fund grants and then CDVG public services, 15% of our CDVG award can be used for those direct services, so we use the same application, they get easier for applicants, and then we have a process on the backend. Further, we have some capital funds and economic development, and then planning and admin with CDVG. Those are both ongoing. ARPA presents a unique one-time funding opportunity, so it differs a little bit from the other grants that we do give out. The grants in this case can be a little bit larger, they are focusing on housing stability and basic needs, youth programming, financial literacy, and workforce development. Again, this is one-time funding, so we did ask some additional questions of applicants during the application process, focusing on readiness, because a lot of them like the expansions or new programs, and we also had a greater focus on sustainability, since these are a little bit larger, what's the plan for seeing some of these services continue, since we know that this is one-time funding, we don't anticipate that the city would be able to come in and continue funding, certainly not at the level that, that this would be offering. With that, you'll see a total of, oh, this is, okay, I'll do this now, and then I won't do it later, this is the general review of what our ARPA for social services is funding, $800,000 for housing stability and basic needs, proposal before you tonight, youth programming at $1 million was the original proposal, we'll talk about that recommendation from the commission and committee amendment at the next item that I have. Employment and education is $650,000 for future RFP, fully funding our Human Services General Fund grants to cover that expansion that was made, and the contracts have been executed. Nonprofit facility usage pilot with parks, and then a community engagement and legal notices, that's partially expended and will continue as we have further releases of funds. I will do one other thing, I said I was going to do, and then I didn't, is just talking about our application process and evaluation. So part of what we do is when we release funds, we release a request for proposals, and this goes out for any of our applications that we have for social services. We provide technical assistance along the way, focusing on the intent of the RFP, technical questions that may come up, we don't review responses from nonprofits prior to applications coming in. When the applications close, staff will do a technical review, we check to make sure that agencies are eligible, applications are complete, there are a number of other factors that come into play, like looking at Department of Revenue, business license, et cetera. They all go to the Human Services Commission, which in recent years has evaluated all applications that are received, sometimes that can be as many as, I think 78 is the highest that we've received at any time, and they do evaluate all of the applications, they're evaluating on program description and need, accessibility, outcomes, and budget. Budget can include sustainability, feasibility, readiness, and use of funds. And then when it comes time once they're awarded funds, we do contracts- Budget can include sustainability, feasibility, readiness, and use of funds. And then when it comes time once they're awarded funds, we do contracts. We do monitor all of our agencies, especially, we monitor all of them. But we will do early monitoring with new to us programs or new programs just to make sure that they're on track with documentation, tracking residents correctly, service units, that when it comes time for us to receive reports, that there aren't surprises for them or for us. We do check clients, so client files and financials, doing that compliance monitoring there. There are additional monittrings that can happen throughout the life of the contract as well. And CDVG has different requirements, a little more intense than that, but same, same premise. They do report on performance for both number of residents served, service units, outcomes, and in most cases, it's reimbursement and funding for actual cost. For housing stability and basic needs, all applications are through 2026. The application period opened April 3rd, closed May 31st. We received seven complete applications totaling $2,137,074.54. Each commissioner, as I noted, read and evaluated all seven applications. The commission made one recommendation for the $800,000 for housing stability and basic needs. The vote was six to one with one abstention. The recommendation is to fund five of the grant proposals. I'll give a brief overview of each of those now. Bridging a Gap, the weekend feeding program, recommended for, all of them were, except for one, were recommended for $175,000. Bridging a Gap provides food to youth in, in the schools. So they send home food for the youth, sometimes for their siblings as well, to ensure that they have food access over the weekend. The Federal Way Community Caregiving Network, we heard a comment on what they do. They do provide rent assistance or eviction prevention to low and latter income households in Federal Way. Just to comment, any eviction prevention, that type of resource is always provided to the landlord, but it's in support of households that apply for that assistance. Fusion, finally, Home Again is going to be offering move-in and initial rent assistance for families that are exiting homelessness. The Intercultural Children and Family Services is, for their Fathers and Transition Program, is offering some wraparound services, including some financial assistance for fathers who are just as involved in the community. With, oh, and I missed one, sorry, I think I had five. Multi Service Center, Food Bridge and Community Connections is expanding their, their food access programs. This includes, and Kim, you can correct me if I'm wrong or add more detail, but additional connection out into the community, doing some deliveries to different locations and to people's homes. So increasing that food security in, in Federal Way. And then we did have two applications that were not recommended for funding, largely in part because there's not enough funding to go around. That included the Federal Way Black Collective for Wraparound Support Services. They have some housing programs, this would have expanded what they're doing. And then Intercultural Children and Family Services had two applications. Similar programs, this one was targeted to a younger father population, but again, limited resources. And based on applications and evaluation, the others were recommended for funding. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Doby?
Can I move adoption?
Let's do that and we'll start a discussion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I would like to thank Sarah, staff, and the Human Service Commissioners because I do know they put a lot of work into this and they do make tough decisions that they recommend to us. So we should have more funding to go around, but we have what we have and we need to get it out to who we can as quickly as possible.
Here, here. Counsel, any other questions? All right, or discussion. All right, there's been a motion, there's been a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and again, that was for the item F on the consent agenda. All right, thank you very much. All right, now, let's see here, public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing on item eight. Ordinance intent to designate the Community Business Zone a target residential area for purpose of the city's multifamily tax exemption program. We'll have a staff report from Keith Niven, our Community Development Director. We'll open it up for public comment and then we'll go from there. So with that, Keith Niven.
I'm clearly not as tech savvy as my staff. Good evening, Mayor, Council President Cochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, and City Council Members, Keith Niven. So this evening, we have a proposed code amendment for multifamily limited tax exemption. The policy question in front of the city council, should the city council amend Title III? And our multifamily tax exemption is 3.30. To expand the multifamily tax exemption to the Community Business Zone. Currently, our targeted residential areas are just the city center core and the city center frame zones. And so the policy question is should we expand it to the BC zone? So for those of you who are not super familiar with our zoning map, the Community Business Zone is primarily up and down Pack Highway. You can see it is orange on this map. And then this little kind of outcropping out here in the southwest is kind of the corner where Winco and the project that's under construction catty-corner to it currently. So Heartland's finding is multifamily tax exemption can only currently be used in the city center core and city center frame zones. Application to the BC zone as well, at least for the desired urban level density project types, would improve redevelopment economics in that zone. So the idea again, and this is part of our Housing Action Plan implementation, is trying to boost housing production within our city. And this is one of the nine recommendations that Heartland made for us to consider to expand multifamily tax exemption to the BC zone. So the application procedure, so we did get one public comment. And I talked about this at LUTC and I wanted to share it with the full council. So we did get one public comment and that was to also consider amending our code to allow for the developer to apply later in the process. Right now, our application process and our code says that you need to apply by either your land use permit or the issuance of your building permit. And the public comment we received was, could it be later in the process, such as prior to certificate of occupancy? I looked at some other city codes. Kent is, is at first building permit, Isiqua Rent and Bothell Redmond, first building permit, but it gives the director some flexibility. Bellevue is 60 days following building permit, but gives the director some flexibility. And then Kirkland and Auburn, right now their code say anytime prior to certificate of occupancy. So, so if, you know, if the council is amenable to us amending our code to make it a little bit more flexible, the suggestion from staff is that we could bring a separate ordinance later that would potentially change the timing to be more consistent with what Kirkland and Auburn says, which would be certificate of occupancy. So the mayor's recommendation is to go ahead and approve option one, which is to approve the ordinance following the public hearing to expand it to the BC zone. And that is the end of my presentation.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember McDaniel.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Can you explain a little bit more of how, what, exactly what tax is going to be exempted? And then how this benefits the, the city and development?
Sure. So what it is, is it's a property tax exemption for a limited period of time. And what that does is it change the, it changes the economics in the favor of the developer to go ahead and build projects where they might not otherwise build them. You know, the city still, from that redevelopment, the city still collects sales tax on construction. Plus, once that limited period of time expires, then the assessed value on that property takes advantage of the redevelopment and all the assets that are provided. So we basically have a period of time where we're not getting the property tax, but then after that, the property tax will have jumped up from where it was prior to that development.
Gotcha. And then is it, how, when it says multifamily, how many dwelling units have to be in there? Is it only the large complexes or could it be a two, duplex? Or how, how large does it have to be?
It's a great question. I believe, I believe it's eligible for anything more than, I'm going to say something that's probably wrong, so let me quickly take a look and see if I can find it in code. I do not see a number.
Would it be safe to say it's in the three to five range?
It is at least that.
So it's, it's a small threshold.
I was going to say four.
Fourplex, minimum fourplex?
Yeah.
Okay. So medium sized developments and up. And then, okay, that's it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
If I find that number while I'm standing here, I will clarify.
Councilmember Washington, the Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, question Keith. If the, if the developer's already committed to it and has already built the, the structure, I mean, basically the tax exemption is motivation for them to, provides incentive for them to build and develop. If they've already done that, you know, they're already in it, what is the, what is the advantage of being able to have them apply there later on when they've already committed and they're already building?
Sure. So part of it is, is just as long as they know when it is they can apply for the tax exemption, it, it gives them, you know, by, if, if we were to change it to a later point, and that, again, to be clear, that's not part of this ordinance that's in front of you this evening. That would be a separate, something to come later if, if we felt like that was something we wanted to do. It would give them more flexibility to do that paperwork. Sometimes things change during construction in terms of size of units or, you know, where they might want to locate those affordable units. So think about it, if you had, say, multiple buildings on the site and you wanted to cluster, you know, those units. So all of the, all of the project wouldn't necessarily have to apply or, or be part of the MFTE. It could be only a portion. And so it, it allows it to play out a little bit differently. But to your point, what's the advantage? I think the advantage is it just, it gives them more time and oftentimes developers are focused on actually building and getting things ready for occupancy rather than doing paperwork to satisfy a, a tax exemption, even though that's money and they should be focused on it, but some aren't. So all it does is give them more runway, I guess, is an easy answer. Yeah.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. And so we would follow Kirkland and Auburn where it's anytime prior to certificate of occupancy?
That is a conversation we could have after, after it's, this is, again, just applying it to the BC zone. That other conversation, we would draft an ordinance and bring it to Land Use and Transportation and have a conversation there on whether that makes sense or not for, for Federal Way.
Okay, my other question is, you mentioned that we would still collect the sales tax from construction.
Yes.
So I know when Sound Transit said they were going to be building, you know, two train stations and the MNO facility here, that we would collect sales tax on their building. How much sales tax would we get from construction of a multifamily, let's say the one going up at 348?
I don't know, I don't know the value of that off the top of my head. What I can tell you, because we are in a different relationship with the potential developer on the city-owned property TC3, that that southeast building, if you can think about that site plan in your head, and I can't remember exactly how many units that had, but somewhere around maybe 300. It's the, their projected value of that is $240 million. So we get, I'm looking at our finance director. We get a three and a half percent of the total?
3.6 out of the total 10.1.
So that's just an example of one building. Because I know the value potentially. But 348th and First would be, that one building at the corner, the one that's the tall one, that's going to have a slightly lower assessed value because of the ones that we're talking about with Trent are a little bit more sophisticated. The rest of the project behind it are three-story woody walk-ups. And so the overall project assessed value will be probably significantly less than what we're expecting on TC3.
And is sales tax is a one-time?
It is a one-time.
And that's done at completion of the project?
It's done, yes, during construction of the project, when they're ordering materials and delivering them to the site.
Okay. It would be interesting to get the, from the 348th property.
I can, I can ask them.
What that is.
We're, we're in conversation, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, just a clarifying point. This exemption, it's either what, eight years or 12 years? And there's no affordable housing requirement if it's the eight-year, correct?
Correct.
And if they have affordable, it's 12-year?
If they have affordable, it's a requirement for 20% of the units and then they get, they can do the 12-year.
And the developer would make that decision, we don't make that decision.
Exactly. We offer, we offer both choices.
Offer both. Okay, and then.
And we have neither currently.
Yes.
Just in case that was part of the interest.
No, this is a, to me, this is a great opportunity to encourage developers to develop with high interest rates and the things that are going on. It's helpful for them to have this opportunity. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you. Oh, one last question. The property tax, we're only abating the portion that the city gets, not what the, or the whole total amount?
Just, just ours.
Just ours, that's one. Okay, very small portion of the total.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel?
And the prepping for the ordinance, you'll be presenting probably later on for expanding, allowing to go, you know, towards the point of occupancy. Could you actually put together the numbers on the 348th and First Avenue? What kind of revenues would be foregoing if they did sign off on that? Or if we do sign off on that?
I could definitely provide that information if they're willing to share.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Stay close. I don't see any other public comment, excuse me, any other council questions, but we have a public comment.
Mayor, I could real quick to Councilmember McDaniel's question about how many units are in a multifamily, it's four.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
One more. Keith, I have one more question.
Sorry.
Is there, is there a downsized to this? Is there a reason that we wouldn't want to be doing this?
If we ever get to a place in the city where we've met our housing target and we, you know, our housing target right now is.
11,500, I believe.
Thank you, council member. So if we get to the point where we've actually hit our housing target and we no longer need to try and increase production of housing, there may be a reason why we might want to put a moratorium on MFTE. But we have not come close to our housing targets for a long time. So I think that that could be a possibility someday, but I don't think it's anytime soon.
All right, I've got one pink sheet on this. Anna Patrick?
Hi, I think the MFT is a good, good idea. What I learned about it is that you can, we can fill in the gaps. In the city, we, we really need the middle and upper income brackets of housing and it allows us to do that in the downtown. I'm not a fan of more tax exempt housing, but it does give us a little more control. But what I would, what I would like to address is Skip, I forget what it stands for, South King Housing. There's a meeting on Friday, I think Brian Davis is part of that, I'm putting you on the spot. There's, there's a, a new plan coming up for the upcoming year and they're talking about what their priorities are going to be and we're part of that. And I would encourage our city to start looking at ways that we can partner with Skip to monitor these MFTE programs collaboratively because we are going to start looking like Bellevue with the, the large number of housing, housing units that we have to monitor for compliance. So I just want, you know, that meeting's this Friday. They haven't come up with their plan for the. They haven't come up with their plan for the upcoming year yet. I think it's going to be established this Friday, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Anna.
And, oh, one other thing with this, with this South King Housing, whatever you call it, is that if you go with their program, it's 50 years tax-exempt. So, I think we should be very careful with that and make sure we're learning all there is to, to learn about all these different programs and make sure we don't get sideswiped by something that we're not expecting.
Right. Great point, thank you very much. Do we have, Stephanie, do we have any other public comment?
No, Mayor, I don't.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Councilor Doby, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Spread a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, that's close, and we'll take, take care of that on the ordinances. Council Business, we've got item A, 10A Resolution, Policy on Naming City Property. We'll have a staff presentation from Brian Davis, a city administrator. Brian.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposal for naming city property. Excuse me, a proposal for, a, a policy on naming city property. There've been a number of requests for naming various city property, and it was a desire of the council to establish a process and criteria and general policy for, for doing so. The scope of this policy, the proposed policy includes building structures and real property, including parks and open space, does not include historically significant property already named, commissioned public art already named, rights of way in the streets, and rooms within city hall. The procedures, as originally drafted, are the typical procedures that we would send a, a, an item of, of something that needs council approval, starting with either the mayor, a majority of the council, or a member of the public, that then goes to the mayor's office for a recommendation to a council committee, and then to council for approval. At the Parks Committee, the committee recommended, in addition to this process, and that is that it go through a city commission, or commissions, plural, depending on the, the subject matter. And that is, that is the current recommendation, that it go through a commission, depending on, again, depending on the, what the naming is, that it would go through the appropriate city commission. And then on to council committee, and then council for approval. Application would have maps, photos, topographical landmarks, et cetera. Statement how the proposal meets the criteria, and I'll get into the criteria in just a few moments. Summary of the public outreach that demonstrates wide support, can't just be one person that wants it, has to show that there's a wide range of, of people and groups that would like this proposal to move forward. In addition, there will be a cost estimate provided by staff for the renaming, and then the council has to appropriate the funding for the renaming before it moves forward. So, the criteria, and this is, these are highlights, this doesn't cover everything. It avoids similar names that are already in use, maybe based on location or distinctive natural features. For renaming of something that already exists, if the name has existed for 50 years, excuse me, that's the last one. If it's existed for 50 years, then those will be favored instead of the renaming proposal. And then the, the bullet that I skipped over, something where the, the names are, are common or developed over time, topographical features, nearby schools, historical plat names shall be favored as well. If historical significance is the, you know, in the, in the statement that they submit in the application, if they're citing historical significance as the reason for the renaming, then it has to be, the name has to be associated with an event reflecting the broad pattern of Federal Way's history, or associated with the lives of, of persons of citywide significance in Federal Way's past, reflects a distinctive architectural or engineering achievement, is related to an existing or proposed registered historic landmark, or highlights previously under documented or poorly understood historical narratives. The renaming may be named as part of the city's objective to place the issue of diversity before our citizens in a positive manner, or it may be named for an individual organization that has made significant contributions to the city, and the naming is a stipulation of a contribution, such as naming a building, for example, if they, if they gave a large donation for that renaming. Another criteria that may be used, criterion that may be used, is for individuals who've enhanced the quality of life in Federal Way, such as leadership in a civic organization, outstanding humanitarian work, and leadership in, just general leadership in events and programs that have broadly enriched the quality of life for Federal Way residents. If there is a building that already has a name and there is a desire to rename a portion of the building, such as the, what we have at the Dumas Base Center, the Knutson Family Theater, that is also allowed. I believe that is it, which it is. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions? Okay. Councilor Walsh, do you have a motion? Or actually, Councilmember Sephedosha.
I do have a question, yes. So, as we're developing this criteria, do we need to know what, do some kind of an inventory to see what's available for even naming? Because without that, we don't even know, like, if tomorrow 10 people decided they want to apply, or they want something to be named after whatever, then how do we even move forward without knowing what we have available, and then, you know?
Available as far as something that doesn't have a name yet?
Yeah, so...
I, I don't know, because the, the policy also includes naming things that already have names, so that basically is anything, if we, if we're including naming and renaming. So, it's, it's purely up to the council to go through these criteria and determine if they want to entertain that proposal based on these criteria. But there's no, there's no real inventory that we could limit to, because it includes naming and renaming.
So then, for renaming, what would constitute, constitute renaming? Like you said, you know, Knutson family, I don't know if that's forever or permanently there, but do we have a time limit then on all the namings, based on, right? So, I don't know how renaming is going to happen then, if we don't have a, a limit on the naming rate.
Like I mentioned in one of the criteria, if it's, if it's, if the name has been in place for over 50 years, then it suggests that the council should place that at a pretty high bar for a renaming proposal, that they should favor something that's been in place for 50 years, unless there's something that the council feels like it needs to be changed.
Okay.
All right. Councilor McDaniel, and then the Deputy Mayor.
Going along with her comment, it would still have to go through the mayor's office and then the committee before it hit, or committee before it hits the council. So, at any point in time, it could be stopped if it becomes, you know, like you said, 100, you know, 100 new names come in tomorrow for stuff that's already been named.
It could, yeah, it could be, if it goes to the mayor's office and it, and it, the application clearly doesn't meet the criteria, then it potentially could stop right there. Or, at a city commission, it probably, even if the city commission said, no, this is not good, it would probably still move forward to
Okay.
the council, just because they're advisory, they're not, and then at the council committee or, or full council, then that would be another step where it could be recommended not move forward.
Council committee could at that point, if they...
They could recommend that it not move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, for instance, Steel Lake is spelled S-T-E-E-L. It was homesteaded by a family from Muscatine, Iowa, which is where my daughter-in-law is from, and by a family named Steel, S-T-E-E-L-E. And apparently, when it was, the name was being documented by whoever documented things back, way back then, they forgot to put the final E there. If we wanted to make this historically correct, which I, I would love to do, I think it's proper to do that, would it go through this process, or would, is there another process to go through to make Steel Lake actually reflect the, the name of the family who homesteaded it?
My understanding of this new policy is that it would, it would need to go through this process to, I mean, whether it's one letter, or a
Okay.
name that's 20 letters long, it's still a renaming, so it would technically need to go through the process.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. All right. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah.
And then Walsh.
A couple of questions. 50, 50 years is a pretty high bar, which I don't disagree with. I think it should be a very high bar to make some change. But the, that pretty much limits what anything in Federal Way can be changed to, if we're using 50 years. I mean, I moved here in '68, and there's a lot of names that were here before I moved here that are all over 50 years. So, I, I just point that out. And then the, the other thing is process, which committee would this go through?
Just depending on what it was.
Well... Well, does it go through par, I mean, it's...
Could be land use, could be parks, could be, you know, parks on, on, your city facilities usually go under park. Sorry, I, I interrupted you.
Well, I was just going to suggest that we define that instead of just committee, because there are certain committees that these naming shouldn't go through. But parks, as I've heard, and maybe land use, are probably the two committees that are going to be most affected, and I think it should be named, so if we're going to go through a process, people at least know where it's going to go.
Yeah, the reason that we left it generic is, is to merely provide flexibility in the process, because often when we go through committee on any item of business, and there's a, a scheduling issue, I don't know if there would be in this case, but when there's a scheduling issue, we easily switch committees, and it's pretty seamless that way.
Or, or maybe it's, I mean, I'm talking about the citizen, the commission and the committee, maybe we should name those, because it's really only two committees it's probably going to go through, and instead of leaving it ambiguous, you might say, it's either going to go parks or land use, just so you plan ahead.
Diversity Commission could also be implicated.
Well, maybe, but it wouldn't be the first one I'd send it to.
Right, correct. I mean, maybe it would be, you know, I mean, depending.
Are you talking, that was commission, I think you were saying committee, but maybe I'm...
Well, there's, there's commissions and there's committees.
Right.
And if it's not laid out where it's going to be, it's just going to be all over the board sometimes, and I think we should have some, some, some order that says it's either going to go through parks and land use, it's either roads, or it's parks, or something like that. And the commissions, then, would be the Land Use Commission or the Parks and Rec Commission, so everybody knows the roadmap, so we're not always scrambling, okay, it's over here, it's over there, it's got order to it before it begins.
Could also be the Arts Commission. If, if public art is being renamed...
But it says no public ar...
Well, I think right now, I think actually what we're hearing, actually, just as the, it's going to start in my office. I mean, the recommendation either would be self-generated by me and my staff, or through a majority of council, or the public. One of the three is, is shown on the graph. You, can you go back up to that?
Sure.
So, then it comes to my office, and so, I, I think actually, I'm going to be, I'm going to, the, the office of mayor will likely direct the traffic. And it could be arts, it could be land use, depending on what it is. A lot of the city's facilities would potentially go through parks. Obviously, anything at a park would be parks. I don't know. I, I think if there is a diversity element, we would want to consult with the Diversity Commission, which is actually what, what prompted this analysis, was there was a, the, the Kona historical significance. And that, I think the Diversity Commission is at a lot of interest in. So, it just, I think it would just depend on any one of the applicable commissions. Deputy Mayor?
I believe the reason this was even added was so that we could have more input into the process from citizens, so, which, you know, and, and the city commissions are those people that we put on to get their opinion, so...
I'll just finish up. I, I just would, we're going to do this, it makes sense. I just want it to be very businesslike and not emotional.
Right.
And that's why I, it's all going to come from the mayor's office, it's, you know, where it's going to go, but if you have some order in what committee it's going to go to, it takes some of the emotion out of it, because it's a business decision instead of, you know, an emotional decision, and that's what I'm trying to talk about.
I think the greater discretionary decision-making is, will come on which commission it's going to go to. And frankly, it could go to a couple of different commissions, just depending. We may want to get, it ju, it just depends on what the issue is. Like on the Kona situation, I may, you know, just depending, I'll just be candid, I may send that to, depending on what, what, what we're looking at, probably diversity and, you know, and, and planning, you know, just those two, or, excuse me, or parks, excuse me, that's what I meant, parks. And it may be both commissions, and just to make sure that we wouldn't do one and not the other. So, I think it's actually, I, I would want the, the basket of, of possibilities. I actually hear what you're saying, because what you want to do is be transparent, you want to remove the emotion, emotion from the equation. So, then actually, I think if it then went to council committee, I'm sorry, this is your guys' discussion, but I, I want to just provide some, some assistance here. If, if it goes to committee, the council committee could always refer it to another commission to get feedback. If they, if they felt like I didn't, or whoever the mayor is down the road, hey, bypassed an important commission, the council committee could say, timeout. Well, we want to hear what that commission has to say. I don't know. So, that's a, but ultimately, that's my explanation, it's your guys' decision. So, is there, is there any other discussion about this, or any motion to amend, or... Deputy Mayor?
So, currently, we don't have a procedure.
No.
So, something wanted to, if someone wanted to name something, like after Mr. Kona...
Yeah.
They've come to you. So, this is a way to involve more people in the decision-making process
Yeah.
and to hear more voices.
That's right. Yeah, and it says council commission. I actually would recommend maybe even a, you know, the, a bracketed S of commission or commissions.
That's in the ordinance. There is a, we included the option for it to be, it says, I think it says commission parentheses S, so it's commission or commissions. So, the graphic is incorrect, but the, but what you just said is in the policy.
Good, okay, all right. Councilmember Walsh has been waiting patiently while I, going on and on.
Well, I, I just, I just wanted to say, I think that this is a reasonable solution. Is it perfect? I don't know, but the thing is, is that we could amend it later on as well, if we found out something. But with that, I would like to
Can I add?
to move approval of the proposed resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second. Councilmember Sephedosha, did you have a second?
Yeah, so, how do we inform the public?
That's a great question.
Because we do need public input.
I think the mayor will inform the public on this one.
I'm sorry?
I think the mayor will inform the public on this one more than on...
But I...
We have perhaps something in there.
Since there's been some stuff rumbling along.
But this goes to the heart of what Councilmember Doby was talking about. Councilmember Doby, go.
I just have, I want to comment.
Yeah.
We just, how do we inform the public? I mean, naming things is very sacred, very important, and I just hope we don't have, like, 2,700 people coming here with all sorts of ideas of how to name something. And I'm not against naming things, but I think we're really, we have to have order and we have to have a process, so I'm okay to support this, but if this gets out of hand, I'm going to be the first one to say, hey, let's stop this, because we've got more things to do than name things after people. They're important, I get it, we've done it a lot, but that's not the highest priority on my
Yeah.
as I sit here.
That's right, yeah.
And I, I, yeah, to go along with that, we're talking about the process, I mean, the procedure and process, but not the overarching, why are we even doing this, I think is a question that we need to address. Because if it doesn't meet that litmus, whatever that is, which I don't know, the litmus test, then it coming to the mayor or council majority, or, or the public making the request, if there's not some kind of a guiding...
System.
Yeah, then I could come and say, I want something to be named after me tomorrow, you know, because I've served 10 years on the council, right? So, is that, is that appropriate? So, I think we need to also talk about that and see what really qualifies. Otherwise, like I said, anything could be named, so I think we need, there's, there's got to be a, a bigger conversation, not just about procedures and policy, but
Yep.
something above that, I think that we're missing, and I, I'm, I'm looking for it, I don't know what that is.
I agree 100%. We should have a really high bar.
Right.
A really, really high bar to name something.
Right, exactly. Councilor Walsh?
And, and I think that that's the, the purpose of the council committees and the council, and, and we will set that bar. And we will set that bar.
Yeah, agreed. Well, that's why I think process protects all of us, and there's multiple avenues. Okay, all right, any other comment? Okay, there's been a motion, a second. Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Stephanie?
Councilmember Sephardosson?
Nay.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries five-two.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. All right, now moving on to item B, ARPA grants for youth programming. We've got Sarah Bridgeford coming back up, and also Kim Backrack, our Human Services Coordinator.
Good evening there, council. I will have some slides that I'd like to just highlight over that are similar to the last item on Housing Stability and Basic Needs. This item in particular is focusing on the ARPA grants for youth programming. The policy question is, should city council approve the recommendations for youth programming grant awards funded by ARPA lost revenue? I discussed a lot of this earlier, so I'm not going to go over the overview of what all is included, but I will talk just a little bit about youth programming and financial literacy both, because those will come up in relation to this item. As you have heard, the Human Services Commission did recommend that council use the two-hundred thousand from financial literacy and put that towards youth programming, since we did not have any complete applications for financial literacy. Just a comment on the youth programming, that one of the reasons why this was included for funding is that our youth services are critical and they're really varied. The number of types of services that we see that get captured in youth programming can be mental health services, after-school, academic, mentoring. It can be for justice-involved youth, employment training, and much more. Financial literacy similarly has a place in what social services does. Financial literacy is a lot more than budgeting. It's really hard to budget when you're a lower-income household and can't make ends meet, let alone trying to find additional money to pay bills without additional assistance. Financial literacy is banking access, credit counseling or debt reduction, trying to build up emergency savings, accessing financial products that people who are lower income, have lower credit scores, may not have access to. There are a lot of other factors that come into bank access in particular that are important. In the work that we do, there's never enough funding for all of it. I think what you heard in a lot of comments and from the Human Services Commission is that the youth programming, in particular because of the scope and the number of projects that presented with applications that are ready, providing these services within the community and have feasible projects proposed in their applications, that's the basis for that recommendation. I would also just comment that we heard from another, a number of programs tonight that did not actually submit applications and are still recognizing and supporting the need for youth programming. That's a really hard decision to make, both in terms of the recommendation from the commission as well as US council. And we can answer some questions tonight as you have them. So the application, again, same application period is Housing Stability running April 3rd through May 31st. We received twelve applications totaling four-point-nine million dollars, just over that amount. Just recognizing that this would do only a portion of what we could say would be the need within the community. Each commissioner read and evaluated all applications. The Human Services Commission recommended unanimously to use the funds for financial literacy and apply that towards youth programming, as no applications were received. They put a slate of recommendations forward to council to fund eight programs at one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars each at the Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. The committee recognized the need for financial literacy and then did that recommendation from the commission to retain the funds for financial literacy. It allowed for, it would allow for the reopening of that grant application. And then did retain the eight programs recommended for funding, just reduced all of them from one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand each. And with that, there are the programs that are listed here. I will invite Kim to talk about the programs. You'll see a wide array, so she'll give you a quick overview of each of the programs that are recommended for funding. There's a wide array here. A lot of them have mental health components. Some are social-emotional health, mentoring, different populations being served. It's a fairly well-rounded slate of recommendations. There are a number that are not included for recommended funding. Part of that is by scope of funding and looking at the evaluation and making determinations based on that. Again, not enough funding to go around to fund everything and have the kind of impact that we were looking for with these funds and getting outcomes. That there are eight programs that are recommended, and I'll invite Kim to just share a little bit about those eight programs.
Good evening, council. You're able to find a little more longer of a description in your packet, but I'll just give you a couple phrases about each of these programs, just to remind you of what those are. So Boys and Girls Club of King County, they're proposing a program that will increase mental and behavioral health programs in their teen center in Vedro Way. This includes their TX Center, which you may have heard some residents commenting about this evening. The Built to Lead Program offers programs that engage youth in their community, college, and career readiness. They increase school attendance and promote mental health and well-being. El Centro de la Raza is advocating for an after-school program for middle schoolers that increase self-confidence and offers homework, help, and tutoring. King County Sexual Assault Resource Center is proposing to provide prevention and also intervention to sexual assault services to youth. MFC is proposing to provide case management and prepare students to take their GED test. Phenomenal She is proposing to mentor young people while exposing them to both science and the arts, along with licensed mental health therapy. And finally, The Progress Pushers will be mentoring, will have a mentoring program for youth who are at risk of juvenile justice system, justice-involved, or formerly incarcerated. And I'll pass it back to Sarah. Apologies, I missed the back page. Bella Cities will be offering formal mental health services for young people, including one-on-one counseling and group therapy.
Thank you, Kim. And with that, we would be happy to take any questions that you have.
All right, Councilmember McDaniel?
Good evening. I do have a couple of questions. Thanks for speaking to me earlier. You kind of answered a few of them. I'm gonna ask a couple of them anyways. One thing is when we discussed this last week, as I requested, you guys' scoring matrix and also budgets. You had explained that that was something you had thought about, but could you give me the...
Yes, I owe an apology on that. I was not thinking about my schedule. We will get you that. We use essentially the same scoring matrix across our grant applications. Some variances for federal funds. And I was not thinking about my schedule when I was then out of the office and not back until today. So my apologies on that.
If you don't mind, if you could still send them over, I'd like to take a look at them.
And happy to walk through that for anyone who's interested. We'll send it out to all of council.
Because I didn't see him, I have a couple of questions about what might have been scoring and also a little bit on the budget side of things. I'm gonna start first with, because we actually pulled the financial out. The group that spoke earlier today mentioned that they knew of five local groups. Did we actually reach out to those local groups? And did we not receive a single one of those financial literacy groups back?
And I'm not exactly sure which she was speaking of. I know some that are more regionally based that are on the listserv that we have. We also do our legal notice and have multiple other avenues. We typically don't do a lot of individual reaches because of the scope of the potential applicants, including on the financial literacy. Like, we're not going to get to all of them and we don't have typically the time. On something like this, if we did a call-out or a, you know, smaller application, that would be something that we can look at. We would still use our other broader methods as well. There are a number of listservs that goes out to that include some of those agencies as well, that they are on some of our communication.
And then the fact that financial literacy is tied into some of this, because it's the youth program, that financial literacy would max out, I believe, twenty-four, age of twenty-four, correct? So was the financial literacy that was separated, would that have gone past the twenty-four?
Yes, financial literacy would be available to any, anyone who, as with all of our services, is a federalway resident and has low to moderate income.
Okay. Was part of the scoring requirements, was diversity, inclusion, equity part of that when you guys looked at the groups and stuff?
There is an element of DEI and access, so we do look at accessibility of services. We do ask agencies to respond to a question about disparate impacts and what they're seeing with both program access. So the demographics, what we know about social services, as we do with poverty, is that there are certain racial groups that are overrepresented compared to the general population. We also will occasionally see outcomes that are not, are disparate across racial groups. So we ask for comments around that as well. It is a portion of the evaluation.
The comment about the one-hundred-and-fifty minimum, is that an accurate statement, or...
Technically, there was a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar minimum, and the commission felt very strongly about funding these eight programs.
Does that apply for the housing? Because I know it's one of the housing only had a hundred. Was that just not, is that gonna make an issue for that, or...
That won't. That was the remainder of the funding. In advance of bringing recommendations to committee and council, Kim reached out and did talk to the agencies. Some programs are scalable, and it's easier with some of those Housing Stability and Basic Needs programs to adjust funding like that. That's not always the case in programs like what we're seeing with the youth programs that rely on staff and different types of engagement, that if they're adding staff, we want to see that they have the funding to do that and hire the people who will deliver a good service and get good outcomes.
And I noticed we have eight selected. Was it required, because one of the things was the amount of money that's going to each one. Was there a certain amount that we had to select, or could you pick one? Or is there a certain amount that the committee has said, yeah, we need to have at least this many? Or was it kind of like, these are the ones we could not say no to?
It is a, they could make a recommendation to fully fund one or two. And they will look at the finances and the feasibility, sustainability, also the scope of those services, that when we look at needs that exist in the community, that's part of the evaluation and putting together a full slate. So typically, our funding is not the, like, that leading funding or that forefront. And we say supplemental, this is kind of somewhere in the middle. And that's part of their decision-making process, is going for a broader array of services.
And I noticed the group that spoke tonight is Game of Life. Are they one of the groups on here?
They are not. So Game of Life, our funding comes with a lot of restrictions for some smaller organizations that are community-based. Like, sometimes that doesn't always align. We operate on a reimbursement funding model, quarterly payments, sometimes we can do monthly. But even then, that can be a bigger burden for smaller organizations. A lot of organizations that are doing maybe more adaptive or creative programming can find that to be a barrier.
So that particular group would not have been able to qualify because of the size or just because of the extra burden we put on?
No, they could have qualified, they would have qualified. And I hope we'll continue to, you know, look at our policies, it's something that we're doing, on where we can incorporate additional kinds of programs. Our general fund, their smaller grants, they're easier to do that. They would have qualified. It's something that we'll have some continued conversation about, you know, how we can get there. We do provide technical assistance and capacity building to any nonprofit fund or not, within our staff capacity.
One of my concerns is I wanted to make sure that any group or any person who needs help who falls in this youth category would not be excluded from a group just because they don't fill a box. The only box I felt that needed to be checked off is, I need help. So I actually have two hypotheticals, and I wanted to know if this hypothetical falls into a box and if there's any restraining circumstances to it. If a sixteen-year-old is sexually assaulted, is one of these groups that we're looking at, programs, is one of them able to support that kind of situation?
Well, there is a program, the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center is offering that specific round, sexual assault resources. So if anyone can apply for that service, there is no barrier.
Male, female, base, doesn't matter, it's just open?
That's correct.
Second one was, again, fourteen-year-old suicide. Is that something, someone who's suicidal is reaching out for that? Does any one of these programs be able to hit that particular area?
I would say with mental health, there are programs that have a mental health focus that, yes, that's true. If we have suicidal youth, I'm hoping that they're accessing crisis services and that our programs would be referring on first to that crisis service. But there are a number of programs that are both formal and informal mental health. Some incorporate counseling, mental health therapy. Others are more social-emotional health, so maybe not in that crisis moment, but would be good for that ongoing youth development.
And pretty much my last question is, in those kind of hypothetical situations, if they reach out to one of these programs, would these programs then let the parents know that their child is in that kind of situation?
That is a state law around mental health. I'm not going to speak in any detail. I don't know all the details, but there is an age, I think it might be something like thirteen, thirteen, where a young person can seek mental health treatment without parental consent. So there are, they would defer to state law or mental health-based programs. We're talking formal therapy. We'll know that law and follow that and be compliant with that requirement.
But some of these programs do follow those requirements, correct?
That's correct.
They fall under that category?
Yes, that is correct. Not all of them.
Not all of them?
Some would have parental consent required.
Okay, okay, that was it. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sephardosson?
I think Councilmember...
Go ahead. I'm in no hurry.
Me neither.
I'm gonna be here.
Thank you. So my question is around financial literacy. And the fact that you said the baseline was one-hundred-and-seventy-five kind of may make me think about this question maybe differently. However, if it was to be lowered to one-hundred-and-twenty-five and we still hold on to financial literacy, because, you know, the four areas that you have for human services, you know, housing stability and basic needs, youth programming, financial literacy, and then workforce development, right? So it seems like we're leaving out one of the four components that we do use for human services. So, but, I mean, and then of course, it was mentioned earlier that financial literacy is also included in these other programs that we're funding. Yet, oh, yeah, yet it doesn't reach the older population, families that we, that do need the financial literacy and the support, particularly if there are people who are looking to purchase homes or anything that is at that scope or level. So I really did wanna see financial literacy be put back, and I supported that idea. But my question is, if, well, not a question, but it's really a statement. If you reached out and they didn't respond, then that's really concerning. But I don't know, I did reach out to one agency and asked them, and they weren't, they weren't sure. So I don't know, I'm just waiting to hear back. Just, you know, if it got into somebody's email and never got seen by the particular person and not necessarily by someone else who needs to do it. But I would still hold on to wanting to see that happen, because this is a good opportunity to do financial literacy and with that kind of funding. So I definitely support youth programming. I wish we had more money. And this is something we're always challenged with in any kind of funding process. But not against the youth program, but, and, you know, like Betty and Cynthia said that... But, and, you know, like Betty and Cynthia said that now it's gonna take more time, you know, staff time and commission time. But one thing we discussed last week was if we don't find any financial literacy agencies to apply for it, then without any re-review to this, you are gonna put back the monies towards these agencies, I think was how we discussed it. And so I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot more time to your workload, but I don't want to speak to that either and make that part of my decision-making. But I think it's very important that we continue, if possible, or if council agrees to look for an organization and maybe give them another two weeks or whatever. But I also understand the fact that they did not submit an application and that is a no-no. And so that's where I struggle with this whole idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Doby?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions here. It says that on the sheet, the commission voted four to three with one extension. And I'm assuming you were at the meetings. So what was going on? Why would somebody in such a time when we have all this money, why would somebody abstain? And why was it four to three? What was the dissent going on?
Yes, and abstention in this case is due to conflict of interest. So as with all of our application processes, if there is an agency in which there is a, that somebody usually is on a board or has some other connection to, they will abstain from decision-making around that.
So it was a conflict of interest why they didn't vote?
Yep, and the four to three, this one not our typical in terms of response where you might see something come through unanimously. A lot of discussion around a couple of applications that just not enough funding to do all of it, very different purposes and similarly.
So the question, you know, I look at all these requests and when somebody requests something, it's usually they have a reason why they accrest 225,000 or 889,000. They got a program they're trying to fund. And it just looks to me that we just picked 150,000 and said, we're gonna split the cake amongst everybody and hang some of them and some of them we're gonna let them use. I mean, was there debate on the merit or was it just, hey, let's give everybody the same amount of money?
There was. And the commission did feel that given the scope of funding, that there were some requests that were outsized. So not our typical. Granted, these are larger requests than a lot of our, like our general fund grants are anyway. And that they did have a lot of those discussions. Their recommendation in process included having staff have conversations with organizations regarding where their program is scalable, if this was a feasible amount for it to move forward. And Kim was actually the person who did that. And I'd be able to speak more if you have specific questions.
So you feel that somebody asked for a very large number and we're giving them 150,000 instead of 800,000, they're still gonna be able to do something with it? Instead of, you know, cause that's a big ratchet down from what they want to do a program to a pittance of what they were, is that gonna cause anybody any issues, you think?
I, you know, based on the conversations, I think that there were probably a couple of programs that had some hesitancy, but did say that they would have meaningful service with those funds. I think that's something that we, if this goes forward, would certainly be watching and paying attention to how services are delivered, what outcomes are, you know, what kind of adaptations they might have to make as a result of that.
And I guess, you know, the financial training, I think I was the one who brought that up and we talked about that up at the dais and we offset 200,000 to go to that. So how did the committee hijack that money and decide that they knew better than what the council had earmarked it for?
The commission, just based on the applications that were received, did want to put forward that recommendation. So it's just a recommendation, it's not a decision. And it is a recommendation to council. And as an advisory thoughtee, they took the notion to try that.
When this money went there and this dais up here all said financial literacy was pretty important, did the commission know that that was important by the council? And they decided that it wasn't important? Even though nobody, even though nobody applied, that's not the issue in my mind. It was something that was pretty important, I thought, and they decided that it didn't matter?
I would just say I don't think that the commission is saying that it doesn't matter. The commission also came forward with the recommended program, like how to apply those funds across the different program areas. So it was listening both to community feedback, looking at data throughout the pandemic as these are specifically COVID response funds, listening to council. So that recommendation also came from the commission with that final kind of slate of options that we had talked about.
So if I look at the committee report, it said go to 125. And if we did that and we decided financial was not important, we could always give them another 25, correct?
Correct.
It wouldn't affect anything, or would it?
No, we would have contraction then. I would say if we can not say that it isn't important, I think it is important.
That's what it says to me.
Not that it isn't important, but at some point we do have to look at what projects are ready and feasible and who applies. And we can do additional work on seeking applications if that's the direction of council. If we didn't receive any again, then that's a conversation, you know, that we would say, we don't have a project at this moment. Hopefully we get some data around why and then we'd be able to use those funds in other ways.
And I guess my question is if, and I don't know what everybody else thinks, I know what I think. But if we were to not give the 150, everybody would give them 125 and have the reserve to look at the financial piece of it and then grant it later? Could we do that so that, you know, cause there may be some viable things that come up that we could use that for, for financial trading? We have a lot of people in federal way that are hurting because they don't know what they don't know. I mean, would that cause these groups any great problem? I mean, your opinion, your professional opinion?
My professional opinion, I, you know, I think this is, this is a difficult decision. I think the more we reduce programs that had higher requests that were facing this on like FTE and how they build up this program, it does get harder. That's a harder place for them to be in. We didn't have the conversation since last week with each of the programs, but prior to that, that reduction to 150 and they were able to do that and felt confident. Is that true if we stay at that lower note?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Walsh?
Yeah, I have a question. It's kind of the, on the opposite end of what, what Councilmember Doby said, you know, with reducing the funds. On the other hand, some of these, for example, Phenomenal She, I think is a, is a smaller program, isn't it? I mean, it's not a big program like MSC or El Centro de la Raza. It's a smaller program. And some of these that are smaller programs, are they really prepared to have a temporary? I mean, cause this is just a one-time, one-time grant. It's not an ongoing thing. I mean, are they prepared to suddenly expand and then contract again in a year? And what, I mean, I'm a supporter of Phenomenal She. And I'm just pointing that one out because I know it's a smaller program. But what kind of practical impact would that have?
And I, in looking at each of the agencies, I won't speak to their size, but I think that there is a mix. A lot of agencies have received best starts funding. So we've seen some growth in smaller community-based organizations that are local in recent years. I still think of them as a smaller, newer program, but I actually think that they've had a larger budget than I would have initially thought. In terms of sustainability, we did look at that and the commission included that in their evaluation. Looking at the sustainability, that there's a plan in place over the course of this contract, part of that would be a discussion with each of the agency and ensuring that they're looking at continued funding. Some are easier in housing stability and basic needs where, you know, it's still responsive. Those needs will probably still exist at the end of the grants, that it's easier to scale that. There's less staff intensive. It's been made clear to the organizations that they do need to look at sustainability.
Yeah, obviously there's a difference with somebody's helping with housing assistance. I mean, hey, you can, you can use it and then next year you don't have it. But it's something like this where it's adding FTEs and things like that.
We will do ongoing conversations with the organizations regarding that. We're not going to provide them with additional grants or specific grants to apply for, but ensuring that that's part of the conversation so we don't have a drop in service.
All right, thank you. Cause I also, you know, I think that the financial literacy part is a very critical thing and I tend to agree with, with, I guess I could call him JD. That if, if we aren't able to allocate it to financial literacy, we can come back and give them additional funds in the end. Because obviously these are very worthy programs and the people who spoke, I mean, spoke very eloquently of the need for it. And I certainly do not want to negate the, negate the need with any of them. But there's, we need, there's a lot of balancing.
Councilor Doby?
I just have one follow-up question, I'm sorry. On your graph, you had $650,000 for educational, or then it was to be RFP?
Correct.
Does that have to go there? If we decided to move 150, could we take 200 out of there and put it towards financial and place market like we did before? I mean, I really am passionate about financial training. But, I mean, I'm just wondering if that 650 that's set there, is that some RFP that I don't know about? Or could we make that 450 and move the 200 and just see what happens?
If I'm able, I mean, I can take a go and then looking to legal.
We need to pause for a moment. Council President, can you please make a motion with regard to the extension?
I make a motion to move, to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Run a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're good to go. All right, so.
Workforce development or employment and education, we were looking at the potential of a regional project. We may not have that, so it would go out to RFP. And I think that that could be scalable as long as, you know, it's allowed. The, I think council can make that decision.
Council President?
Well, for my two cents, so I'm getting a little bit lost. I agree that financial literacy is important. I absolutely think that that is valuable. However, we went, I'm talking about fairness. Our commission went out like always and asked for people to apply. You received no applications for financial literacy. You received applications that, as usual, asking for more than you have. I have a problem with, I mean, why would we say, oh gee, I think that we should honor what the Human Services Commission reviewed and took all of the time to look at and evaluate. Honor their recommendation. If you want to do financial literacy, I think you need to find other money for it. I think that you should, they did not receive an application. I don't think that it's fair to them to go out and say, oh, we didn't get an application for this thing, so let's go out again. I think that we should follow the recommendation of the Human Services Commission, go ahead and honor that and then find the money elsewhere for financial literacy if we feel that that's important.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I agree with what Councilmember Coachmore just said. I believe we should honor the commission's recommendations. If, if we don't, if the vote is not to do that, how will you reach out to financial literacy programs to use the $200,000? And what is your timeline? Do you have a way to do that?
Yes, we would have a way. I would actually think that we would first reach out to programs that we're aware of and probably also ask Cynthia, since she is the person who commented that there were five that she knew of. I think there might be more that, you know, we can reach out and just check and see like, what is it with this application? Before we would go out, is it scope? Do they need less funding by the nature of the service they're providing? Is it something else before we go out? If I were guessing, just based on other applications that we're going out, we have capital application right now for CBG. And that puts us in September. We're probably the October for a recommendation to city council.
With some of these existing programs that have been funded, could you go back to them and ask if they have a program for financial literacy that they could include?
We could, we could do that and take that approach. I think generally we know, probably not all of them, but there are other resources, including members of city council who are familiar with think access and financial literacy programs. But we could do that as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Doby?
Yeah, I do, I know Bill's been working on some ideas on this in the background. And so it's not like nothing's been going on. So, and maybe it hasn't been communicated very well, but you know, the assistant, Bill's been working on some things, so it's not in a vacuum. I think there are some pretty viable things that are being planned, worked on to come to the council.
Right, exactly. Councilor Tran?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do agree with Council President in regard to the $200,000 move to youth program. I don't think the commission, and I've tried to defend the work of the commission even though I was not there. I don't think the commission hijacked the $200,000 that the council want to do on the financial program. The issue is at this moment, at this time, nobody willing to do that program. Nobody want to provide that program. And instead of us sitting on this $200,000, we can give that money for all the, with the agency like Mr. JW mentioned earlier. So, you know, if we come up with, with, you know, some agency or company that willing to provide that service in the future, we can talk about it. We can find the money to fund for that program. But at this point, I think, you know, we just need to give the money to those agency and, you know, let them do their work.
Councilor Doby?
And I don't disagree with you, but I believe that if we could take, we should leave some money, some number. This council all agreed that it was important at one time. So we don't have to come back and find it in the budget. I mean, I'd be happy if we just had 100,000 set aside. And if it could come out of that 650 on that RFP and we agree that before we do an RFP, it's only 550 and we have 100 and see what we get, what happens, I'm okay to go that way. But if not, I'm gonna vote against it because I think financial literacy in our community is very, very important and youth is very, very important also. But we got other people we need to help also. So anyway.
Okay.
If it's a pervert, may I, if that's the route that council goes with the 650 is that we run one application for both purposes and then we'll do intentional outreach around financial literacy. But that way, if there's, if we find ourselves in this situation again, we could have a slate of recommendations that might be a little bit easier when it comes to discussion and decision-making. Since it would be the total amount of funding, we would instruct the commission that financial literacy is a priority if we have applications that are eligible and feasible. Just it.
All right. Councilor Sevadawson?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, and thank you for the, people in the council for your suggestion and how you feel. And I think if we do, since it's employment and education, maybe the education part could be financial literacy, right? So we can probably go that way and find the funds within that 650 like you suggested and not harm or take away from what's been recommended already. And I think because there's strong feeling about it one way or the other. And I believe if there's, if the 650 has not been dedicated and we don't have anything in place, that maybe we can throw that as part of the programming and see if there's traction there and we get applications that way.
All right, let's go ahead and, thank you. Councilor Walsh, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the proposed grants as outlined and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement to that end. And with that being said, I would
to execute the agreement to that end, and with that being said, I would encourage the council to, you know, as, as we were discussing, part of that 650, to dedicate part of that towards financial literacy, however we, whatever works best. So, anyway, but that would be aside from this, this motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
There's motion, a second, is there any further discussion?
First, I'd like to know if we're voting for the 150 or the 125?
As proposed.
As proposed is the 150.
As proposed is the 150.
Okay, because, right.
Well, actually, hold on. No, it's 125. It's, it's as, as brought forth by the council, by, after committee.
So.
As, as brought forth during the presentation, it was 125.
That's what I'm, what I'm asking. Okay. So, my second question is, and this is to our city attorney, I sit on the Boys and Girls Club of Federal Way, the board, can I vote for this?
I'm not sure what that means. So, is that, is that the agency that is getting money in this vote tonight?
They're getting, they are.
The same agency?
They are one of the agencies.
The board for Federal Way is the same as the King County Board?
Well, King County is overarching board. Each, each, each club has their own individual board, and then King County has a larger board.
So, I guess the question would be, if the entity that you are a member of the board of will benefit from this, then you should not vote on it.
So, do I pull that to vote, or just not vote on it?
You just don't vote.
Just recuse yourself from this point forward. Okay. Okay, we've got the maker of the motion. Do you have a, before we go down there?
For clarification, are we voting on the 150 I'm seeing, or like I said, are we on the 125?
We were on the 125 that was passed by the committee, that was presented to the council. That was the, the motion as presented. That was what was, that's what's before us right now. So, Councilor.
I, I would, I would like to amend the, can I amend, amend my own motion?
Yes.
Okay. Or, you know.
I'm sorry, was there even a second?
There was, multiple, yes, yeah.
You may amend.
Okay.
So, I move approval of the proposed, proposed grants as, for 150,000 to each one of the outlined organizations, and authorize the mayor to.
Can you read those organization, can you read those out for the record?
For 150,000, for the Boys and Girls Club of King County, Build to Lead, El Centro de la Raza, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, Multi-Service Center, Phenomenal She, Progress Pushers, Valley Cities Counseling and Consultation. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the.
I have second amendment.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a, a second to that motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Stephanie? And one recusal.
Councilmember Sepadossen?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Sorry, I recuse myself.
Council President Coachmore?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now as to the, now, okay, great. And now we're on to the main passage. All those, excuse me, excuse me, is there a motion for, actually, we've already had a motion in a second, now we've, we've amended that. All those in favor of the main motion?
As amended.
As amended.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And one recusal. Stephanie?
Councilmember Sepadossen?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
I recuse myself.
Council President Coachmore?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1.
All right, thank you. Item 11, ordinances, first reading. Item A, Council Bill 856, ordinance, multifamily tax exemption expansion to community business zone. We actually had that staff report already, presented during the public hearing. Is there any further public comment? Is there any further public comment? Do we have a pink sheet on this? Know it online? Okay. Now, the record should reflect it. There's no one asking your comment, and no pink sheet. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 856, ordinance, multifamily tax exemption expansion to community business zone, an ordinance of the City of Federalway, Washington, relating to expanding the city's multifamily dwelling unit, limited property tax exemption program to the community business zone, amending Federalway Revised Code 330010, 330020, and 330030.
All right, Councilmember Doby?
I moved forward the proposed ordinance to the August 8, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item B, Council Bill 857, ordinance renewing Lake Management District Number One for Steel Lake and setting September 19, 2023 as the public hearing for the assessment role for the district. We'll have a staff report from Kevin Dew, Water Quality Program Supervisor, have a comment, and then we'll move from there. Kevin, thank you so much for, and sorry to keep you so late.
No worries.
You can come in a little late tomorrow. Actually, I think you put in another, what day did you, what time did you get into work today?
I came in at, like, 7, 7:40?
Man. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's fine. We can make this go through quick, so it's not that long.
Good.
All right.
We'll stop talking.
Good evening, council. I'm here to present the ordinance regarding its renewal of the Steel Lake Management District and setting public hearing for the assessment role. And so here is the rundown of the renewal process to date. This all started with petition signed by residents around the Steel Lake, gathered by the Steel Lake Advisory Committee, and this led to a resolution to reform, with the intent to reform. There was a public hearing during that, for that resolution, and during that public hearing, we passed, we adopted the resolution to call for a vote. Those ballots were sent out. We collected those ballots, and they're majority in favor of renewing the Steel Lake Management District, and now we are here now with this ordinance for setting the assessment role, a public hearing date for the assessment role to fund this district. And so the public hearing on the assessments required by the RCW, and it should be during the council meeting on September 19, 2023, with staff presentations, citizen council comment, questions, and then also adopting a resolution confirming the assessment role during that public hearing. And so during, so there's a couple notices we have to send out before this public hearing, required by the RCW. This involves a letter to all affected property owners, and then two notices published, published in the local newspaper, and after that, we'll have the public hearing. The public, the contents of those public notices include a total amount collected by the district, the public hearing date, time, and location, the, the proposed assessment role document for review, and how to file objections if they wish, and then the individual assessment amounts will be sent to those affected property owners. So after today, the next step will be the second reading for this ordinance, and then following that, the public hearing, for which we will have the resolution, adopting the resolution confirming the assessment role. A few more other things is that after that, we have to adopt in their ordinance establishing the time of payment for those assessment roles, and then a, also a resolution creating the LMD Advisory Committee, and so that'll go through the first and second reading, and after adoption, we can appoint those advisory committee members, therefore reforming the Steel Lake Management District. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Kevin. Great job. And I would highly encourage you, we would all highly encourage you to take the day off tomorrow. Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mayor.
I think, Kevin, I think this is where you say to him, okay, do I get to take this without?
Like a comp day.
Oh, yeah, comp day, comp day, comp day, okay, gotcha.
Actually, you've already worked another, another so many hours, so.
My compliments on the best presentation of the evening.
Exactly.
Short and sweet, right?
That's right. Great job, Kevin. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 857, ordinance renewing Lake Management District Number One for Steel Lake and setting September 19, 2023, as the public hearing for the assessment role for the district. An ordinance of the City of Federalway, Washington, renewing Lake Management District Number One for Steel Lake and setting a September 19, 2023, public hearing on the assessment role for the district.
All right, Councilmember Doby, would you please?
I moved forward the proposed ordinance, the August 8, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. We are on to council reports, the second meeting of the month. We'll start at position seven. Councilmember Doby?
I'll start over here. I, I gotta compliment Deputy Mayor and Council President for, I think they're the ones who really organized the meeting that we had at Starbucks, and I wanted to thank them for that. I, I got two individuals that came up with two really great ideas. I just wanted to share those. One gentleman came forward and said, we do a lot with flags in the City of Federalway, and he suggested that on the birthdays of the military organizations, and, you know, the Marines, the Army, the Navy, we should raise the flag in honor of our service members that served, and have a flag day one day just for those military branches. I thought that was a great idea. Makes it, you know, our veterans are important, our people serving are important, and it just sends a message that we support them. So, a fellow by the name of Mr. Burns brought that forward, and I thought I would share that with everyone. Another great idea, or a thought we should at least think about, and we heard about it tonight, about signs of panhandling. One of the ladies came up to me and said, I wish the city would put a sign like by Costco and Walmart where panhandlers are, and just tell people, don't give them money, call this number for the services. They said it would be safer for the traffic, it would make scamming not as big as it was, and this came from somebody, and I won't use her name, because she was very, very pleasant, that I would have never thought in a million years would recommend that. So, so if it came from her, I, I wanna, I wanted to bring that up, because I thought that was a great idea, and I wish I'd thought of it. So, anyway, those were, came out of that meeting, and I appreciate organizing that, and that was probably one of the most, best meetings we've had in a long time with citizens, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna repeat a lot of what the other Jack said. Great, it was a great meet and greet, very profitable. I had to be at a funeral earlier, so I only made the last part of it, but it was very, very good. And with the, and, and the, the other idea with the, the signs for, for panhandling, that is something that I've been playing with for a while, and I, you know, I know that a few years ago, Mark Copeng proposed that, and it really didn't go anywhere at that time, but I think it's time that it goes somewhere, and I, I think that we need to, to pursue it, and would that be pursued as a, I mean, it's, it's not an ordinance against panhandling, people can still panhandle, but have an ordinance, but, but have signs above the prime panhandling spots that says, please do not give to panhandlers, if you want to help, and then list either with a QR code or some way where, you know, the different organizations where they can help. And so what would be the best way as a council to pursue?
I would add it to your agenda with the Public Safety Committee, add it to your agenda for discussion.
Okay.
And direction, and then bring it up here.
All right, excellent.
Yeah.
And then lastly, kind of with public safety as well, I think that, you know, the, the council president had asked for a report on some of the other things. This wouldn't be a report, but I think there needs to be an emphasis on, on, on jaywalking prevention in the area on 320th, kind of there where the Safeway is. I mean, there are, the other day, I was pulling into, turning to, pulling into my business, there was a guy crossing in a wheelchair, and I mean, almost every day I see people crossing, this guy was crossing in a wheelchair.
Yeah.
But there is so much going across, you know, and, and it's not that far of distance to, to lights and crosswalks on either end, but I think that there needs to be an emphasis patrol on that, because somebody's going to end up getting killed, and it's not only going to end their life, but it's going to ruin somebody else's life, the person that hits them. And, and I think that there, there needs to be some type of enforcement emphasis, particularly in that area.
I don't see the chief. Oh, there you are, right there. Okay. Chief, let's, let's talk about that tomorrow. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tran? All right, all right. Councilmember?
I'm kind of the same with those guys. I enjoyed the meet and greet. I was there until 2:30. I had some very interesting conversations. Quite a few people came out and opened some conversations I didn't expect to have, but most of them ended pretty well, so I was pretty happy about that. The big thing I did hear at the end was, they wanted more. People really enjoyed it, and they were talking about the park, or the, the night out, stuff like that, to open up the opportunity more to kind of pull back together and have those opening opportunities for the public to reach out and talk to us. But overall, I, that was the first one for me, but that's for you guys too, and I, I enjoyed it and found it to be a, a good way to learn to slow down, listen, and watch what I say.
Geez, I wish I had learned that a long time ago.
My dad would be so happy.
Thanks, Councilmember. All right, Councilmember Sepadossen?
Yeah, I think same thing. It was a great event. I did talk to a few people. Of course, one comment I said earlier was about having the police or cop there too, as well as the fact that there weren't a lot more people there was also, so they asked where it was published and how we can get the word out, and so the sign came up too, you know, using the reader board for that, for that event when we do it next. And instead of going to Starbucks, what was suggested was going to another local business, or local, whatever that is, so. But otherwise, I also had a good time, and what was really great about it was seeing people visiting, actually sitting down and just having these casual conversations with people that you normally don't engage with unless you see them here at meeting, council meetings, and usually just say hello and leave. So, I too enjoyed the time spent there and meeting people, so, yeah, thank you. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. On Saturday evening, I attended a birthday dinner for girls aging out of foster care called Celebrate 18, and I'd like to thank Dr. Natalie Ellington. She's the founder of that. It's called Eileen, Eileen and Kelly's Place. We had 25 girls this year. The first time I went, I think we had five girls, and this year we had 25 young women aging out of foster care who received a birthday party which lasted all day, from hair and makeup to new clothes, to getting assistance with resumes and jobs, and then finishing the evening with a birthday party with presents and a dinner. And just thank you to Dr. Ellington for her work on that and her vision for that. The Kiwanis Salmon Bake is coming up. It's the last time I'm going to talk about it this year, 67th Annual Salmon Bake, Friday, July 28, from 4 to 8, Steel Lake Park. Tickets are on sale now. You can buy tickets there, but the line can be really long, so you might want to buy tickets ahead of time, so you don't have to stand in that line. It's always a beautiful day. It does not rain on July 28, from 4 to 8. It might rain beforehand, because it did that once, but it does not rain at 4 o'clock when this, when the salmon bake starts, so I would encourage you all to come. We will have tents with our nonprofits in the community there to talk about their programs. So, it is a non-political event, which for some people, that might be important, and I would just really encourage you to go. Also, the Federalway Seroptimist are, is holding a bingo night. It's bingo with blingo. It is to support the Live Your Dream Award, which is a scholarship given to a woman who supports her family and is going back to school. It is Saturday, July 29, from 5 to 8 at Ave Vineyard, and tickets are $65 for that. If you're interested, please let me know. I'd love to help you attend that. And no one has mentioned this, but National Night Out is coming up. It's the first Tuesday in August. Oh, yes, you did. That was, gosh, that was hours ago.
Exactly.
But anyway, so if your neighborhood wants to participate, I don't believe it's too late. We can always use more neighborhoods to participate, but what that means is that the next council meeting is on August 8, which is the only council meeting of the month, and that is the second Tuesday, not the first Tuesday. There's always somebody who doesn't get the message and then gets upset with us, so please, it's August 8, we would love to see you. And even though we might not have a second council meeting, that doesn't mean you can't contact us. We're always available.
All right. Council President?
So, it's always important to remember that our kids, when they're aging, aging out of foster care, means at age 18, they no longer are in foster care, which means that they're on their own, which is very difficult, because a lot of them really aren't prepared at age 18. I don't think my kids are ready until they're 25, and I still don't think they're ready, but, so, what I do want to.